Okay, good afternoon and welcome. It is Tuesday, February 11th, and it is 1:00 and we are going to begin our briefing. We have two items under Business Services, three items under Operations, and two under Academic Services. And we are going to begin with our quarterly investment reports.
Can you find it?
We need to find her, it'll be one second. It's like when people come in and say, "How's the food?"
She was just here.
She was just here.
Yeah, I saw her. She was setting up.
Thank you.
There she is.
And Ms. Desmond, Dr. Desmond, when everybody has seated, could you please have them introduce themselves? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board and Senior Management. David Jang, Partner at Water Walker Investments.
And members of the Board, John Grady with Public Trust Advisors.
And finally, Corey Gable with Public Trust Advisors.
Michael.
Mike Gatewood, Director of Financial Services.
Good, all right. So, good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Atkins, members of the Board. We are here with our very trusted investment advisors from Water Walker Investments and also from Public Trust Advisors to give an update on our investment portfolio, our investment plans, and what our results of that have been cumulatively over the last several years. So, I will turn that over to these fine gentlemen so that they can walk us through and tell us some of the good things that have been happening.
Awesome. Thank you very much for having us here today. Let's go to the first page, and where is that?
Page down. Yeah, there you go.
There we go. So, what I'd like to show to the Superintendent and the Board here today is this is your yearly interest earnings for the last three calendar years, 2017 to 2019. The dark blue bar is the cash portfolio that we helped the district, that both of us, both your advisors, helped there. Then, the gray bar is the one-to-three-year portfolio, which is longer term in strategy, and that's managed by Public Trust Advisors. And then, the medium blue is your one-to-five-year portfolio, and that is managed by Water Walker Investments. So, what I want to show you is, on the top, 2017 to 2019, the district earned $23,758,864 on the money that is, you know, had to look out for, the finance team. They had done a great job. This is tremendous. We love to see that. Of that, to break down the cash portfolio, which is the majority of your funds during the year that's used up within your fiscal year. And that generated eight, over $18 million in interest. The one-to-three-year portfolio earned $2,759,361. The one-to-five-year portfolio earned $2,958,296. So, this is a great outcome. We love the fact that you're well diversified, you follow the rules of Florida State Investment Statutes of safety, liquidity, and yield, and you've generated some significant income to your budget. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
With this, I'll turn this over to John Grady over at Public Trust to talk about the cash portfolio sector allocation.
Thank you, David. Again, John Grady with Public Trust, oh, my God. John Grady with Public Trust Advisors, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to present the district's investment performance. Thank you, David, for that. The cash portfolio, as David mentioned, makes up a majority of the assets of the district, and these are funds that are spent down throughout your fiscal year. You're well diversified within the cash portfolio. You utilize multiple investments, and that diversification is key, but also provides you daily liquidity. And this particular portfolio strategy, in addition to providing liquidity, is beneficial in a rising interest rate environment that we experienced between 2016 and 2018. And we'll talk about how the balance of your longer-term portfolios managed by Water Walker and Public Trust are helping to balance that investment strategy as we've seen rates come down in the last 12 to 15 months. With that, a brief summary of the liquidity portfolio, unless there are any questions, we'll talk through the one-to-three and one-to-five.
So, my name's Corey Gable. I'm a Senior Portfolio Manager, and I manage the one-to-three portfolio for the school district. And first off, I wanted to mention that we're meeting all the investment policy statement requirements as it concerns credit quality, maturity restrictions, allowable assets, and diversification standards. And so, as we look at income generated from the portfolio here in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the portfolio, the one-to-three portfolio generated just under $1.2 million of investment earnings. The book yield on the portfolio is 2.21%, which is significant. We have good diversification, looking at the three mandates that we're using, between cash, which is more fluid with the current level of interest rates. It goes up and down as banks adjust deposit rates. And then, one-to-three, which we're moving out the yield curve, and the one-to-five as well, providing good diversification. If yields go to zero, we've got investments out the yield curve. And so, the yields, last year, we saw the Fed cut rates three times after raising them nine times since the end of 2015. And so, we saw market yields decline significantly, almost 100 basis points. But book yields were able to be very level. We saw book yields stay the same, as we were able to reinvest maturities earlier in the year at higher rates. And so, I think that's important. Duration on the portfolio did drift down as we pursued more of a passive strategy in the portfolios. We said duration did move down slightly, and the portfolio became more conservative over the year. If we look at how it's allocated, which is the pie chart here, our U.S. Treasury exposure increased from 51% to almost 56%. Agency exposure increased as well from 23% to 26%. We saw valuations in corporate bonds, municipal bonds, and also municipal or MBS become very tight, and so, we moved away from those asset classes last year. So, looking at the strategy, as I mentioned, there's the three different mandates, but, you know, I think I wanted to maybe touch on where we feel like the economy's going in our outlook for 2020. Growth slowed in 2019 to 2.3% GDP growth, which is slightly less than the 2018 number that we saw. We feel like growth will moderate, meaning come in about the same level for 2019 and 2020, but roughly 2 and 1/4 to 2 and 1/2%. We would think employment, which has been very strong, and we're at, you know, half-century lows on the unemployment rate, will continue to be a very strong case. And finally, we'll see some of the wage growth, which has been above 3%, trickle into the inflation number. So, we feel like the Fed will likely reengage the cutting policy in Fed Funds Rate that it started last year in the second half of this year. And so, we feel like rates will be moving lower. And the reason, in our opinion, why they'll start lowering rates again is the Phase One trade package we had with China was a low-hanging fruit. It's definitely going to be more difficult for them to continue to progress in Phase Two of their trade negotiations. The coronavirus, which is enormous human tragedy, will likely find an economic impact both internationally and here domestically, as supply chains and business shutdown, travel restrictions, all play a role in economic growth in the U.S. as well. And we feel like the stronger dollar will also plague the U.S. market and its competitiveness, all encouraging the Fed to lower rates and really justifying, in our opinion, the three mandates that you have in place. So, overall, we anticipate increasing the duration of the portfolio that we manage ever so slightly throughout the year with a target of 1.4 years, and continue to look to possibly add municipal bond exposure to the portfolio. We feel like we like that type of credit quality in this point in the business cycle. Housing market's very strong. Municipal coffers have been performing very well, and so, we feel like we like that little higher stream that municipal bonds can present.
Thank you. And to summarize, and turning it over to David, with Water Walker, we believe a few key benefits to the strategies that the district has in place is reduce volatility through these three mandates, increase diversification, and then certainly, hopefully, over longer periods of time, enhance earnings versus utilizing a single investment strategy. And with that discussion, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jang to talk about the Water Walker portfolio. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much, John and Corey. And appreciate that. If you hit the next slide up, thank you. So, this is the last strategy that you have. This is the one-to-five-year portfolio allocation. If you look at the upper right-hand corner, the earnings for the calendar year, January 1st to December 31st of 2019, over $1,180,000 has been added in to your interest income. If you look at the pie chart, what this does here is you show a tremendous diversification. You've gone from your cash portfolio, which is a lot of local government investment pools that are basically money market funds for local governments. You have bank accounts. Then, you had the one-to-three-year strategy, which has a lot of nice exposure to Treasuries to keep it safe and liquid. And then, in the one-to-five-year portfolio, you look at this here, we have added in, you have a 15 and 1/2%, almost 16% allocation to Treasuries, but we give you, provide you a 40% exposure on the bottom to U.S. agencies. These are Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, highest-quality bonds there. You also have some exposure to municipal bonds. For whatever reason, municipal bonds gave an attractive yield for the district's investment portfolio last year, so we provide allocation there. And also, another 18 and 1/2% allocation to corporate bonds. These are all very high-quality and provides further diversification for the district. Any questions? Awesome. So, with that, I'll turn this over to the next page, which is your total returns versus your benchmarks. So, the one-to-five-year portfolio has a benchmark, and the benchmark that you have is the dark blue bar, which is the Bank of America Merrill Lynch one-to-five-year Treasury. So, if you look on the left-hand side for the last three months, the medium blue bar is your portfolio, the one-to-five-year. 51 basis points versus the benchmark 35. For the last six months, you go to the next one, 1.25% versus 1.10%. For the past year, you still earn a total return of 3.59%. The benchmark of 420, it was, the Treasuries rallied last year on fears of a slowing global economy. But comparing to this benchmark, over one year, you still earn 3.59, even though it trailed the benchmark. But if you go to the two-year, over two years, your portfolio earned 2.43% versus the benchmark 2.17%. Over three years, you still earn 2% over three years versus a benchmark of 2.11%. So, all very good things here. Any questions? Great. And I'll conclude with the last page, the one-to-five-year portfolio strategy. Much like what Corey and John talked about, we feel the U.S. economy is really good going to 2020. Right now, this global, the global markets are scared of a slowdown from this coronavirus. But the Fed stands ready, like they did last year. Everybody thought in the beginning of 2019, the Fed was going to raise rates for the rest of the year. But guess what? They turned around. They thought there was issues with the global economy. They lowered rates in July, October, and November. So, they stand ready. We feel that the Fed will be on hold, all dependent upon what goes on with the global economy. But for the United States, we're in good shape. The one concern that we have is distress on the middle class. In our discussions with everybody and the review of the data, wages for the last 30 years, from 2017, I mean, 1987, 2017, wages for the middle class, for all households, grew 125%. That's really good. But housing increased 200%. Healthcare costs increased almost 300, and college tuition cost almost 500%, over 500. So, if you look at that, yes, overall, I think the U.S. economy is really good, but we see a, what do you call, a tale of two cities, basically. It's, you have the top 10%, which are doing very well. You have the bottom 90 that are still a little bit stressed out, but we still feel the economy, with the jobs continuing to grow, should help support the U.S. economy. So, with that, I think what we're going to do for the one-to-five-year is continue to keep the district diversified, and we will extend out the average maturity of your portfolio, the best duration when rates go up. Right now, with the coronavirus and stock of the slowdown, global economy, long-term rates are lower than your cash rates. So, that's why we're going to stay on the sidelines, hoping to take advantage of the markets when it does, when rates do rise. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the Board to ask any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Patrica?
So, we have 125% increase in wages for the middle class, and I'm wondering how that translates to wages for Lee County employees over the same period of time, sort of reflecting back to what we talked about yesterday. That might be a useful number, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, on the coronavirus, isn't there concern that it's artificially depressed, I guess, the spread of the coronavirus, because everybody's on break over there right now for a month? Isn't there some date that they're looking at to determine whether this is going to be an even bigger disaster than?
I'm not a health expert, but we've gone through the other two coronaviruses, which is SARS, that's 17 years ago, and MERS, which is the Mideast Respiratory Syndrome a few years ago. So, if you compare those two, yes, it may be under-reported, because for the first month, we had no idea where the people were, okay? But I look at mortality rate. So, if you think that the number of reported cases are lower than expected, then the mortality rate really is just above flu. I'm not saying this pandemic or epidemic is going to go away soon, but I have to trust that the healthcare agencies throughout the world, including the World Health Organization and China and the CDC in the United States, will get around this like we did with the other things. But it could be under-reported in terms of the number of cases, like you said, correct, because of the lunar holiday out in Asia. At the same time, the mortality rate, from what I've seen, is slightly above flu. Right now, 19 million people have been infected with the flu this year, 20,000 deaths, and we're not talking about that.
Right.
All right? But like anything else, you read everything. I talked to my doctor, I said, "Hey, what about this?" They go, "Forget about the mask, wash your hands." That's usually the best way when you travel.
Okay, thank you.
I think, you know, from our perspective, we're a little more concerned. I think the, this morning, I saw the coronavirus reported cases is 41,000 with over 1,000 deaths. And the SARS epidemic from '02 to '03 was about 8,100 reported cases, so it's over four times or five times as, you know, the epidemic is growing. In 2002 to 2003, Noemer did a study, and Chinese economic growth slowed by 2% according to SARS. And if this is five times the size of the epidemic, Wall Street firms are currently predicting the fourth-quarter GDP in China was 6%, that in the first quarter, it could be 1%. So, a significant contraction. And, you know, as you look at supply chain issues and just overall, you know, with the everyone reporting daily temperature and the quarantine, we're going to have a significant economic impact, in our opinion.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Ms. Gins, I'm calling in Rachel.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I know, I'm sorry. No, I agree with Ms. Patrica about the salary issue, and based on what was just said, I'm wondering, how does that affect our, like, volatility, since staffing and salaries is our biggest expense? So, I would also like to see how that affects us, since salaries is a real issue.
Who is that question for, Ms. Gins? Or is that just a statement?
Yeah.
They were just talking about it, and Ms. Patrica asked a question about it.
Yeah, as I heard it, that was a statement that, you know, we can gather some additional information on along the lines of what Ms. Patrica stated earlier and be able to come back and talk through that as we go through our budget process.
Great. Thank you. And Ms. Chivinelli, you had a question?
So, I'm a local realtor, so everything that you're saying here, I've felt that and experienced that. And actually, the last six months, real estate has really picked back up and heading in a really, really good, positive direction. So, I just wanted to thank you, because I feel it, so it's great.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Thank the Fed for lowering rates, 75 basis points last year, because that has really helped the housing market, absolutely.
Yes.
Great. Is that it?
But before we leave the topic, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Michael Gatewood, our Director of Finance. I think he had some final thoughts.
I just wanted to say thank you to Corey, John, and David, you know, for working with us, two separate companies that, you know, working together with the district's best interests in mind. And also, to kind of put, you know, at the beginning of the first slide, we talked about almost $24 million in interest that we've earned. And if you put that into, like, the budget process, $24 million is almost 240 new buses, or it could be the salary for about 400 teachers. So, just to put that in perspective, I mean, $8 million may be a drop in the bucket, but it can go a long way towards the students on top of the funding that we already have. And just say thank you to these guys for helping us out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us here today. We appreciate the relationship. Thank you, David.
Okay, so, next we have coming up, Dr. Desmond, so don't move. It's FTE Projection Budget Timelines, and Kelly Lecter will also join her.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, members of the Board. So, while we get this information pulled up, just wanted to say again, thank you to our investment advisors. As Mr. Gatewood mentioned, it is one of the, one of the strategies that we use to maximize the dollars that we have to be able to create more resources that we can then reinvest in the budget and be able to create additional resources and additional ways to provide the things that our students and our employees need each day. So, it's a very important strategy within our budget, and they work very hard to help us maximize within our investment policy, first being, of course, the protection of principal, how it is that we can maximize our investments and be able to provide more resources for our students. That being said, it's very appropriate that we're here to talk with you about the fiscal year 21 budget timeline. And so, in that respect, I will turn it over to Ms. Kelly Lecter, who will take us through some information today, re-timeline, and some things that we've found out recently from our legislative process.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So, I just want to go over real quick our timeline. It's basically the same every year that we go through this process. And we have been working with Academic Services and School Development and our schools and things to look at allocations for next year, to see what we can do better, how we can get more money to the schools and help them succeed. We plan on meeting with you all monthly, bringing information to you as the budget moves forward with what's going on with it, with the different fund sources and things. So, we'll be meeting with you monthly, at least once a month, to go over things. Starting Thursday, we're kicking off the department process, so we're meeting with all of our departments. We're bringing them in, and we're going to talk to them about their process. All right, well enjoyed. Okay. We are planning on having the schools' allocations out to them on March 31st so that they can prepare for next year and get everything in line and ready to go. On June 23rd, we'll be bringing the preliminary budget to you so that you can see how it's all come together at that point. On July 28th, we will have our tentative budget hearing, and then on September 8th will be our final budget hearing, where hopefully, we'll put it all to rest. So, with that being said, I'm going to move on to our FTE projections, unless you all have a question about the timeline? Okay. So, our FTE projections, as you know, our FTE are the kids that we have, the students that we have, and they generate all of the funding that we have from the FEFP. So, every year, we do a projection to try and figure out how many kids we're going to have this next year compared to this year, and we look at history and things like that. So, at the same time, the Department of Education is doing the same thing. They're looking at history, and they're making their projections, and then we work together to come to a final number. So, I will say, this year, for the first time in a long time, Department of Education actually projected higher than we did. So, kind of threw me for a little bit of a loop, but I'm going to trust them, because I think they might know something I don't know. So, we went with their number of 1,746 growth over this year into next year, which will bring our FTE to 96,062 students, basically. So, with that, I will say that, and the reason I say I'm going to trust them is that they did something this year that we had not expected. They had a new scholarship program that no one had known about, and it popped up this October, and it was the Family Empowerment Scholarship, and it actually increased our FTE by between 200 and 300 students that we were not expecting this year. And it was a very surprise to us, so we had to hurry up and enroll. They were students, actually, that are private school students that are now, they can, the scholarship allows them to have their tuition paid. So, we saw a lot of private school students that applied for and received this scholarship. It did have a cap on it, and I have a feeling that the reason the state was increasing that was that they were probably going to increase the cap on their family empowerment scholarships, so I'm assuming that means we're going to have more students. We will, however, as always, be frugal in what we're doing, and we will hold back a little bit of money just in case it doesn't happen, so that we can make sure that if we have to give money back to the state, because the kids, the students don't show up, we have that money available, and we don't have to go back into the classroom and make adjustments as the year starts. We are, that increase, by the way, is a 1.85% increase, and we, over the last four or five years, we've hit anywhere between 1% to 2% increase in growth every year. Over the last, since '15, '16, we've grown 4,254 students, which was a 4.7% growth. And interestingly enough, the main part of that growth has been in our ESAL population. That makes up 71% of our growth in Lee County, and that was 3,052 students in that same time period. So, yes, ma'am.
So, what's the distribution of those numbers between, from K to high school? Do we have any idea, or majority coming in young, or the majority coming in?
They're really coming in all over the place, which makes it really kind of trying. And I'm sure you've heard the statistics. When we have an elementary student who comes in that doesn't speak English, while it's hard, it's much harder when you have a high school student who comes in and doesn't speak English, and many times when they come at the high school level, they also have not been educated for quite a few years. So, not only are you trying to get them to learn the language, you're also trying to get them caught up because of their age. We put them where they're age-appropriate, instead of in a lower grade where they're probably, you know, really testing out at. We try to make them age-appropriate. So, I know that that is a focus this year for Academic Services, to really look at that ESAL and see what we can do to help our schools, help our students in that area.
So, yeah, and if you'd like the detailed numbers on how that spread looks, we certainly can get that to you.
As long as it's sort of an even distribution. I was just wondering if there- As long as it's a sort of an even distribution. I was just wondering if there was any one population that was significantly larger than the others in terms of.
Understood. Understood. Okay, thank you.
Questions on our FTE?
How are we keeping up with the need for ESOL teachers? Is that, you know, keeping up?
We can, if we can defer that conversation for academic services, and, but I can say that within our budget process, our Chief Academic Officer has told us that that is the, you know, major focus in terms of how can we meet the needs of that population. So if we can defer that conversation, because I think that's for the experts to talk about.
No, that's fine. Your answer was perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan, please.
I just want to apologize because I forgot during the briefing, we're supposed to wait till the end. So I will hold my questions till the end. Thank you.
Let your slide this time.
Okay, so then I'll go on. So the Senate and the House comparisons. At first, we weren't getting much information out. And I have to tell you, when I put this PowerPoint together, I really did not have much information to go on. The Senate had really just given us a summary, no detailed reports. Since then, I have gotten, received the detailed reports for both the Senate and the House. And in front of you, you should see a piece of paper with some highlights, and that is the comparison of the Senate and the House budget to our third calculation as it stands right now. And I'm going to go over a couple of things on there to point some things out to you. When you're looking at them, the Senate, while they increased the BSA, the Base Student Allocation by $40.17 to $4,319.66, compared to the House's $50 increase of $4,329.49, you would almost lean towards the House at this point, which when I first seen those numbers, I'm like, wow, the House is really stepping up and putting some money where, you know, where it needs to be. However, as I started getting into it, I found something a little bit different that I'll be pointing out in just a moment. The teacher's salary allocation, as you know, is a big piece of what the increase is going to be for. Statewide, the Senate put in 500 million, and the House put in 650 million statewide for each, for that piece of it. That's their proposals. They did put in, both of them, a $25 million increase statewide into the mental health allocation as well. So, but when you break the numbers down, it gets a little bit different. So while the House may have increased the base student allocation, the House also is putting a proposal for the new DCD, or District Cost Differential. So in the past, the District Cost Differential is based on the average of the last three years' price level index. The House is using the last two years' price level index and then doing a salary matrix, basically, where they're looking at salaries in the counties based on taking out the educational field and looking at all other salaries, bachelor degree level and above, and looking at that and the, what that income is bringing in. So as you can imagine, those areas that have high populations of, you know, your cities like your Miamis, they're going, they have a much higher number of people that are well-educated, and so their numbers are higher than other counties. This cost Lee County, by this change, in this year, about $6 million. So what it looks like they did is they took some of that $6 million, they increased the teacher's salary allocation to get above the Senate, and it looks like they put some into their BSA. But if you look at the second highlight down where it says the, it says the weighted FTE times the BSA times a DCT, you can see that that difference in, that's the basic money that we have to spend, how we see appropriate, not tied to any specific category. You see that number drops drastically on the House versus the Senate's because of that change. Now, that change, while this year affected us by $6 million as we're going forward, and the price level index is taken out of that mix, and they're only looking at the salary moving forward. So next year, there'll be an average of two years of the salary, one year of the price level. It's going to drop every year because our salary index is dropping. So that has really affected Lee County and some other counties. So that's something that we probably want to look at and have our legislators and people talk to the state about that, or have our legislative liaison.
Do you have any information relative to Collier County's DCD?
I do, as a matter of fact.
The reason I bring that up is that's a direct competitor. And so if, if they are positively impacted by the DCD and we are negatively impacted by the DCD, that is going to further make it more, I mean, that's going to give them a competitive edge when you're talking about recruitment of teachers.
So they actually were negatively impacted like we were. So their, their matrix using their comparable wage index was lower as well.
Thank you.
Than Lee County. I went through every county and said, okay, who won in this one? So. Some other things that are going on, as you can see in the salary enhancement, I highlighted that one as well, so you could see what the two, House and Senate, what that breakdown for Lee County would be. So in the Senate version, it's about $16.7 million or $16.8 million for Lee County. And in the House version, it's $21.6 million. Neither one of them really spoke to in detail what that funding would look like. The Senate's just basically said per the statute, to, you know, meet the statute. The House had a little bit more information in, but not very much. It talked about who could get it and things like that. So it really wasn't a lot of information as to what amount they were really looking at as the bottom goal line. So 47.5 is what we've heard from the governor. That's what I've looked at to price out and see what we, you know, have for Lee County. But I don't know what they're really looking at with that number. So, and then one other item I'd like to point out on the bottom, so the increase per FTE, so really that is the increase that we've received per student. At the Senate's version, it's a 2.7% increase, and the House version is a 2.38% increase. So the Senate's looking at about $210.62 per student, and the House is 185 per student that they're giving us for an increase. So some of the areas I just wanted to point out on where they got some of this funding from. So of course, you know, the best and brightest was part of the discussion. So the Senate postponed the best and brightest for one year. So I don't know what they're planning to do the following year, which is kind of scary. If we put all of our money in that teacher's salary allocation into our teacher's salaries, and then they turn around and tell us we have to do best and brightest again, and then drop that down, it's kind of scary when that happens. The House, however, did remove it. They eliminated it totally. In the next three cases of the declining enrollment, the virtual education, and the funding compression, the Senate reduced those for a year. The House eliminated them ongoing. And while Lee County was not previously receiving any funding for those three areas, by them removing these items and putting them into the FEFP, that actually gives us now a piece of the pie for those three pieces of funding. So that was a good move, in my opinion. And then the House eliminated the digital classroom allocation altogether. So last year, within, let's see, '19, I believe, we were getting about $600,000. Last year, we got like $300,000, and the current year, $300,000. And next year, the Senate's proposing to leave that in there. The House is eliminating it. And while they're eliminating it and they're putting the money into the FEFP, we still have the requirement that we have to meet for the digital classroom. So we still would continue with what we're doing with those funds. The other thing I wanted to point out, and thank you, Mrs. Jordan, I had a discussion, and she had mentioned to me that there was a phone call, and they had talked about the FRS, and I had not received any information on that. So I dug into that, and I did find that the FRS is going up 18% over where it is right now for our regular employees, which is about an $8.2 million hit to Lee County. So that's going to be a big hit to us that, quite frankly, I was not expecting. They're not usually that large. So I just wanted to let you know about that, too. And basically, when I did this, I said that I didn't have any individual runs. I do now. I talked about the funding and the change. And we will continue to keep watching for more information that comes out and let you know as we know and provide the information to you.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, okay. So on FRS, you said it's overall, what was the percent again?
18% increase for regular.
So we contribute 3%? Is it still?
No, the employee contributes 3%, and that's not including the 3% the employee contributes. That is just the district's piece of the contribution. But the, yeah, and employees have to contribute an additional 3% on top of what we do.
Okay, so in other words, we're having to pay more, but so are the employees?
No, the employees, I believe, stayed the same. Theirs is still set at 3%. It's just the districts are taking the additional cost. I believe. I can check on that, but I'm pretty sure the language left the employee amount at the same.
Okay, so the dollar amount won't change for the employees. In other words, subtracting more from each paycheck?
No, since it's based on salary, if they make more money, it would, but the percentage is the same.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Morgan?
So Kelly, would you send us a breakdown of that formula you used, that the House has changed on the DCD?
Sure.
I'm thinking about, DCD was the reason the consortium formed back in the winter. Can we see how the consortium counties are impacted by this? Do we have any opportunity to push back?
My understanding, I talked with the Chief Financial Officer from Osceola County yesterday, and my understanding was, is that some of the legislative liaisons were on the phone with, I believe it was either the School Board Association or the Superintendent's Association yesterday, having a discussion about that. So I'm hoping that they're also pushing back, so.
We can also contact Carol. I mean, we did meet with Carol recently, and we're talking about this whole flexibility and ratio that comes with the teacher compensation piece. So now that we know the DCD, we can reach back out to her and talk to her specifically about how that negatively impacts Lee County.
Yes, and I did share with them that it was a $6 million hit to Lee County. They asked me how much it was.
If I mean to, the FSBA, Billy Jean, Billy, Billy Ann, they're definitely putting together, and they want to know what the impact is for each of the counties, so that way they can speak on it in a broader aspect.
Okay, I'll send that information to you all.
Kathleen?
So, yeah, I want to follow up. So when it comes to talking about the Greater Consortium of Florida School Boards, renewal of that contract, I want people to reflect on what role, if any, the consortium is playing in this particular conversation. The other comment I want to make follows up. Somebody else spoke about the ESOL. Oh, Gwen, I think, asked the question. When are we going to hear more about the difference in the substantial growth in the ESOL population, and how we, as a district, are going to respond to that in a structural or programmatic way?
We can bring that forward fairly quickly. One of the things I think that will be interesting to the board is we are currently kind of going through the numbers that came out of the winter, you know, coming into the spring, in terms of the tremendous increase we've seen in student population and the nature of that increase. And what wasn't reflected in these numbers, because she did a span of time, was the, how proportionally, year in and year out, that number has increased. And we're seeing that, that trend not only continue, but, I mean, it may be even exponentially growing at this point compared to where it's been in the past. So I'll get with Dr. Spiro when we can bring that forward.
Did you guys have your?
I just had a quick question.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
So you're talking about a significant unexpected increase in the FRS. But as we see increases in teacher salaries, that will also mean a concurrent increase in FRS, and that will be absorbed by any increase in the BSA, right?
So the, and I'm glad you pointed that out. The FRS number that I'm giving you is based on our current salary amounts and what that would, if it had happened right now, what that would look like. And of course, as salary goes up, that amount is going to have to come out of something. And I would assume it's going to have to come out of whatever, however we fund the raises, which is usually from the money that's generated from the BSA and DCD.
So when, at what point in this process, just because I forget, do we, well, never mind. I know the answer to my question. Forget about it.
Ms. Vaughn?
Oh, on, on the ESOL, I just wanted to add that the Curriculum Committee, we've actually been focused on ESOL for months on this. And I think we will be bringing forward some recommendations because we have pinpointed areas through Evelyn Rivera, Dr. Rivera, sharing a lot of data with us on that committee. There are definite, definite needs there for more people to be added. So I think we're probably pretty close to bringing a recommendation forward to the, to the board from our committee.
Thank you.
If you're okay, then what I would like to do is if Dr. Spiro could touch base with you, maybe get an update on where the committee is so that we could combine those efforts.
Sure.
Because it's always helpful when we have an advisory committee that's lending its muscle to that.
That has been the focus. I mean, we've talked about a few other things, but we really are honed in on that because we saw that as a huge curriculum need by this very fact of the growing ESOL population.
Anyone else with any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I think, just to, just to put a bow on that, I think what I heard as our next steps are, we're going to get you some information related to that, that new calculation of the DCD. And I think pretty quickly, we'll want to kind of formulate a district or board response to that so that we can work with Dr. Atkins, to work with Carol Green, to get some information that may push a different way, if, you know, if the board collectively chooses to do so. So we'll work very quickly on that.
I would also like to see the consortium numbers in terms of gains and losses, to see where we are relative to our partners.
Right. Absolutely. And we'll provide all that information, and then through the superintendent's conversations with you, take our cue from the superintendent as to what information to push with Carol Green for. And then we look forward to seeing you soon. This was, as Kelly said, our first runs from the state. We expect that we will probably have more, but we know what ballpark we're in now. We had a short conversation yesterday related to that 2.7% number, which is the high mark of where we are now, which is less of a percentage increase than what we had in the current fiscal year. So we keep that in mind as we go into our budget season of trying to formulate the new budget around the priorities that have been outlined, you know, by the superintendent and by you all, to make sure that we can fit those priorities within the resources that we see, that we plan coming to us based on these indications that we have.
Thank you. And then when, when that information does come back, if we can share, I'll make sure to share that with FSBA as well.
Great, thank you.
You come in front of us every year, with the exception of, I think, one, Dr. Desmore, which was a sad year for us. You come in front of us every year, and you, the news is always bleak. The news is never, really, in terms of the increases we're looking at, the news is never bleak, I mean, never really positive. But you're always positive. And I appreciate that because when we're in Tallahassee and we're hearing specifically from consortium lobbyists, it is not that. It is not, we're going to find a way to make this work with, in the framework of whatever it is Tallahassee presents to us. So I'm just appreciative of, of the willingness to roll up your sleeves and, and make this work for our teachers and our students that you bring to the table every year.
Thank you. It's a, it's a collective effort, and we will, we all always do that. And leadership does a great job of all working together to come up with the best plan that we can that provides the best resources for all of our students and staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Proximity Consultant, and that is with Ms. Eball. Dominic, I always say your name wrong, Jimonelli. And Davis Consultants.
So board members, excited to bring you this presentation. This is one of the big five where we're making some significant progress. As you know, we did make some tweaks to the plan in this January. So we have had some changes already, but this is a substantial step in this process. And so again, it's my pleasure to, to bring this to you. And so, again, it's my pleasure to, to bring this to you. And I'll turn it over to Kathy, Dominic, and Davis Consulting.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, counsel. We are very excited to be here today. We know this has been some time in the, in the making. We are fortunate to have the opportunity today to have Davis Demographics in town. They actually came into town today for the first time, yesterday. Technically, not even under contract with us, but they were anxious to come to today to give a short presentation and a little Q and A that you folks might have for them. So I'm going to turn it over to David Cates and Christopher Melendez here, and they're going to have a walkthrough on their presentation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate being here today. And I'll try to make this brief as I can and open up to any questions you might have. This is a little shortened version of what I presented to leadership yesterday. Just a quick little introduction. Again, our company, Davis Demographics, we've been in existence for over 25 years. I've been with the company since inception. So I have that many more years of doing demographic. We only work for public school districts. Let me put that out up front. Districts all across the country. We specialize in using GIS. I'll give you some demonstration of some of the software and the capabilities with that. And specifically, boundary planning, helping districts redistrict or whatever they need regarding boundaries. With me is my co-leader, my colleague, Christopher Melendez here. And his background, he worked, he's been with us five or six years.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I don't know if you were able to hear me at that point. Someone should have mentioned that. He, he's been with us for five or six years, but he also spent three years working in the Planning Department for Osceola County. So he becomes a very invaluable resource with me on this project. And we have other staff as well. Key support staff at our offices that will be helping us or maybe even showing up, because this process is going to take a while. We head up to a year and a half to complete this. So there might be some people coming and going, but behind the scenes, we have other staff as well. Just summing up, that kind of little first sentence or paragraph there is kind of what the approach of, what, what we're designing to do. And essentially, come up with smaller regions, clustering your, your elementary schools. That's what we're focusing on over the next 18 months or so. But still, at the same time, we're wanting to reduce transportation routes or distances, maybe saving some money on that. Still maintaining equity and diversity in the district and working with, again, key staff and other public choices of people that participate in this committee. I'll be taking the lead, but again, there'll be other people involved. We're the two main contacts for the district. We already met yesterday with the county a little bit, with the JS department and their planning director. We will continue to meet with them some more on other visits, as well as meeting with your other municipalities. It was kind of Kathy and Dominic yesterday and today to even kind of chauffeur us and drive us around your district to get the visual part, because we tend to look everything in two dimensions on maps. So it's nice to get to see what actually is going on in your district, types of new housing as well. And again, we're going to be doing a 10-year forecast for your district. So we're going to do the demographic work as well as facilitating and, and running the meetings to work on these boundaries. So the two main areas of focus that we're providing is we're generating the demographic data. There's a lot of work that goes into this. I'll explain this in a few moments. But the most important thing to us is the best data you have, you be able to make the most informed decisions. This is a very important process we're going through. I know it's important to everyone in the district. It's important to us. So we want to make sure that we have excellent data. And we will be updating the data in the fall. We're basing the data we're working with now on your October data from 2019. And since this is a long drawn-out process, we'll be updating everything in the fall as well as we go through this. And of course, the most important thing is looking at your proximity, proximity boundaries for your elementary schools. That's going to be the main purpose of this committee. The work that we're going to be doing, and it technically started yesterday, maybe a little bit last week, is we are, this is what we do. We compile as much data as we can. We will be researching your active and future residential development data. So the active, we're visiting the sites, talking to the salespeople. And then the future, because it's a 10-year forecast, we're going to be looking to the planners of your cities and your county to help fill in the gaps and kind of tell us what's coming down the line. We also request from the district four years of student data. It's, you know, going to probably be in like an Excel format from our preview, this October, from 2019, and the previous three. So we usually look at the most recent four years. And we go through a process that's called geocoding. And I don't know if you know what that is, but believe it or not, we do it every day. When you go on your phone, you punch in an address, it tells you how to get somewhere, that's a geocode. Just imagine doing it for all your students. We know where all the dots are, where all the students live. I'll show you that as well. We also look at other factors that go into our projections, the transition of students as they progress through the grades. We look at historical birth data, the incoming kindergarten or pre-K class sizes as well. And of course, development tied with what we call student yield factors or student generation rates, what is coming out of each of the homes in the different communities within your district. And we roll those out for 10 years. We present that. It's going to take, really, the first time we're doing this, a good solid four months to put a good data set together. That's going to be the foundation that we're going to use transitioning into the, the boundary committees, meetings. And just to give you, I'd like to show, could we make maps? So you, the visual parts, they, they tell a thousand words by looking at these. This is data we just downloaded from the county. We, with Chris's help, we're able to replicate your, through right now, your current three main zones. This is zoomed in part of your district. Last week, we received from Dominic your latest school information, and we mapped all your schools. And behind everything you see on a GIS database, there's information behind there. So all the information on your schools, and when we gave your students, and we mapped those as well, behind every dot will be a whole list of information for each student. Now, this is an example, because obviously we are just barely starting with your district, of what we intend to do. We break districts into what we call study areas or small planning areas. Think of them as neighborhoods. On average, because those dots, again, those are your K through 12 or PK 12 students. We know with our software how many individual students of each of those grades are in each of these neighborhoods. We assign a unique number. So if we start with 1,000, we'll literally number these neighborhoods, 1 through 1,000. So that's the red numbers you see on there. And if we split any down the line at 100, study area might become 100 A and B. So we have kind of the, the history there. But just doing simple math with the number of students you have, realistically, we're probably going to create about 1,000 of these neighborhoods. And we do our forecasting at that level. We start that low. So we will have a forecast, I'll show you in a moment, for each of your neighborhoods in your district. And then those are the areas we kind of, if you will, move around or cluster to see what we're forecasting in those neighborhoods or sub-areas, whatever we're going to call them in the future. This is an example of development. Again, this is not your district, but we download parcel data, which we already have from the county. And we also track the new or currently active and future residential development. And we put those polygon footprints, if you will, in there. Those are the orange areas. We, behind each one of those projects, we have, this is pointing to our database of the questions we ask. Again, if it's salespeople or developers or owners or city planners. We phase this out over up to 10 years. And we look at occupancy. We want to know, those are when the students are going to come out of these units. We want to know, though you ask that level of questions. And all this information, we're going to be compiling over the next three to four months. I know that you're also hiring GIS people to come on board. We will literally hand this data over to them, so they will have the same data. The software reads it just, is easily just the same. The software they'll be using, you can collect data from the county or the cities. And then we will work together with them. Maybe they'll be updating the development later on. We'll get, they'll do the heavy lifting first. And then we'll work and set you up to be successful internally as well.
So Ms. Gittens, I know you had raised this in an earlier workshop. You know, so they'll be working to train our staff and, you know, with how to use this data once we receive it, so.
We are, like I said, I, it sounds like I'm bragging when I say this, but we're GIS experts for our public school districts. So this is what we do. I've been doing this for over 25 years. Chris, at least the last 10. Whether it's me or him or a combination of doing the training, they will be well-schooled in this. And we're there for support as well. We don't just leave you hanging. So we want to make sure that our clients will turn over the same software we use internally to do our forecasting and our redistricting. And we'll make sure that you're successful with that as well. This is a little glimpse of our software. This is one random study area for a district I'm working with. You could see the first column in here. It says current. So this would, let's say, be your October 2019 data is your district. You could see the .0, .0. Those are real dots, if you will, or students in that column. And you can see the summaries at the bottom. We could summarize this with any grade ranges we want. And then we roll this out for 10 consecutive years with all the factors I mentioned before. And yes, there's .2 and .9. We're kind of taking you behind the curtains here. You're seeing, it is a mathematical calculation with some logic to it. And then the software will round them up appropriately. But this is kind of what you see for each of your, let's say, 1,000 study areas. We then could summarize those by your current sub-areas or future ones as we go through the process. And then if you add up all of your areas together, you get what we call the district-wide summary. These are all your in-district students. We'll also be able to track your out-of-district, but we're mostly focusing on what's in your district and what we're forecasting over the next 10 years. Again, more capabilities of our software. On the left, you see, I just picked a random two-mile walk distance. But with GIS data, you can do this in real drive or walk distances. It's not as the crow flies. So you see these funny shapes. Maybe roads dead end somewhere or whatnot. And sometimes you're surprised when you look at the shapes of these, you know, that that's really within two miles or maybe that area I thought always was is not. If you want to use three miles or five miles, whatever your criteria it is, our software will generate it, and that will be supplied to the, the committees as well. And on the right side, that's a little bit a glimpse of our redistricting software, where you could identify a particular study area. This one is Study Area 56. Breaks down, in this case, it was a K5, how many students we're forecasting for. In the upper box says 2023. So the, we'd group them by your schools or your sub-areas, and we would have this forecast. Again, we could go out as far as 10 years, but with the committee or the staff, we'll determine how far you want to go out. Maybe you only want to go out five or seven. But we will have 10 years out to, to pick from if you choose to do so. Because the purpose of what we're trying to do and the purpose of tying in forecasting to the way we do redistricting is you don't want to have to go through this every couple of years. I know it's been a while since you've gone through this. It, for every district, it's a very painful, tedious process. So maybe you decide, I'm going to wait five more years to redistrict or 10 more years. We don't want to make changes that in the two, three years, we didn't leave enough room for the new students coming in from new housing. Or maybe an area is aging out and is declining, and we could add to the area a little bit now so that it fills up a little bit more. We will look at all those different factors going on in your district. And then as far as the software also, we have the ability to look at specific regions. We could look as far down as the study area, but that's kind of micromanaging, if you will. I just happened to pick your sub-zone W3 as an example. This is a specific demographic and income profile right now for that area. So it shows the census 2010. This will shift soon to have a 2020 column, and then it forecasts five years out to 2025. But it's not just the numbers, the families. It's, we could look at income. We could look at population groupings. They have another ones called Tapestry Segmentation. Might have a funny name, and it looks at kind of funny names down under the different segments. But this is kind of like a, a profile of what the community is like. And behind each of those, you'll see there's little areas you could click on. It'll pull up what kind of demographics are in that neighborhood. Again, as small or as large as we want to go. And then we even have this, I just picked the top three we typically use, a housing profile, where it kind of looks at what's there now, what's the income per household specific to that area. This is not a district-wide. This is what areas, so I know that equity and diversity are extremely important to you. We will have the ability to look at these different studies. Once we fill these schools up with a scenario based on their capacities, we'll get to go back. Okay, now let's look at these categories. And as a staff or as a committee, we'll just, we'll decide together which are the key reports we want to focus on. We'll have student, I think, testing on the student data. So we'll be able to look at that as a criteria as well. So we have a lot of different abilities at our fingertips. And then again, kind of wrapping up here, we're, we're kind of coming up with a game plan starting this afternoon, the last few days, kind of really what the process is going to be. I know you're looking at us as the experts, and we do this a lot and all the time. But I've learned in my experience, every district is different. I don't want to force you to do it the way I've done it before. We try to be flexible and work with your staff on what works best. Who, let the district, you know, decide who should be on these committees. We'll support you either way. If you want five people or 80 people, whatever, what works out best. We'll work with that to see what the proper stakeholders will be on this committee. And when and how our approach, we'll have to decide that. We'll set the criteria. We'll prioritize the criteria for the elementaries. We'll, again, the data, I just explained to you. We got to take the time to put it together, but once we have it, it will be able to almost instantaneously get you answers. We'll have maps, figures to go along with these scenarios that we come up with that we'll work with the committee. And when they feel it's appropriate, we'll share it with the public and yourselves. And then ultimately, we get their feedback from the community, come back, make some changes if necessary, changes if necessary, and then ultimately make the presentation to the board and then you yourselves will make the decisions on, you know, or ask the questions to go further. And lastly, this is my last slide, sorry if I'm going on too long. We, again, we have the tools. I hope to think that that was one of the main selling points and why you chose to go with us. You know we're not local, we have offices in Southern California where we're based and also Dallas, we have a person in Arizona as well. But again, we work for districts all across the country, including Florida quite a bit. Again, Chris's background too. Our tools are written on top of the most widely used GIS software in the world, the same ones your county and the cities use. We built forecasting and redistricting on top of those. We have those reports I shared with you that come from the company that does the software, they do the socioeconomic reports. Again, I showed you the walk-drive distances. We could even look at, I think, times. There's ability to look at distance and time on driving. I know that's a major issue, time students on buses. The tapestry thing is the demographic detail that we could look at. And we have an ability to do things that we call story maps. We sometimes jokingly call them PowerPoints on steroids. What it is with the software, with the GIS, it's a scrolling, you could put it on your website if you want, you could scroll through it and click, it's an interactive maps. And the public can look and get some, we could kind of, like the name says, tell story, the process. And at the end or towards the end of this process, we could publish that for you to, again, we want to be transparent, that's another word I haven't used yet, but that's really important to us. We will share everything with you all along the way with your staff and we will answer every question we can, maybe not right there on the spot, but at least get back to you. We don't hide anything, we show you our methodology, we show you our tools. And if we don't have an answer or a way, we'll try to find one for you. That's kind of how we, why we stayed in business for so long. And open up for any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, it was great. I do have a question. As far as the TERFs or your maps with the dots, those are literally addresses with children?
Yes.
In those homes?
Yes.
Okay, and then you received that from where? From us?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, because we tried to find that out for Franklin Park, the kids that were in the walkable area, we could not find that. So I'm glad that we finally found something that we can use, because we were going to actually walk to the homes to find those parents.
And you will have that the last previous three years and when we turn it over to your GIS person, they'll be more at your beck and call probably than we will. So if those kind of questions come up, Dominic or Kathy, probably have them be able to answer those questions fairly quickly for you.
Well, thank you. And then the second one was, as far as the growth, so you'll work with the county to find out what they're, what's coming up in the future as far as build out, correct? Okay.
And we even talked to them, just, you know, I know the superintendent brought this up, future roads, and they took us around, because as soon as they put certain new roads through, that opens up a whole new wave of development that people might not see now, but we will know that.
Right, thank you. Ms. Patricca?
So I, you said it, equity and diversity are very important to this board, this entire organization. So I get, I get concerned about losing whatever diversity we have in our schools right now. When I look at housing trends, it appears as if we've resegregated ourselves. So if we're moving to proximity schools, that makes me think we're moving away from diversity in our classrooms. I don't want you to answer this right now, I just would like if you could keep that in the back of your mind, as you present to us and give us information, show us how you're overcoming that. And I have two questions for you. The first is, how do you define diversity? What categories are you looking at to determine whether a school is diverse or whether a zone is diverse or whatever?
To be honest with you, I'm going to circle back to what I said before. I don't try to force on you what we believe. That's one of the topics we have to talk about with the key, your key staff and the superintendent is, we do have to still define that. Everyone's interpretation, every school district's interpretation of what equity is or what diversity is, I know we have the answers there, I just don't know what combination that we use them to get to where you will feel comfortable. So I can't right now tell you what they are, we're in their very early planning stages. But before the committee really starts working with the data, we'll have those things set up very tangible.
Great, great answer. By the way, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And welcome to Paradise.
Yes.
Because Southern Florida is not Southern, I'm sorry, Southern California is not Southern Florida, so you may never go back.
Not that Southern California is a bad place to be either, but California.
My last question is about charter schools and demographics. To me, an important part of diversity is the economic background of the student and that was clearly illustrated here. So if you look at our charters, the last time I looked at the numbers, 56% of our charter school kids, 56-ish percent of our charter school kids come from circumstances of economic disadvantage, which pushes traditional public school kids up to the 85th percentile for economic disadvantage. So how do you, how will you factor that in? The fact that charter schools are perhaps target marketing, wealthier neighborhoods, and that gives us a higher percentage of, am I making sense?
Yeah, you are. And again, we've, I've dealt with enough of, you know, districts in Florida, whereas in California and other states or areas, charter schools are looked upon a little differently than they are here. You're definitely more actually dependent on them. I know they're, they are your students, but they aren't your students, it depends how you look at it. I know that Dominic mentioned, we will be receiving all of your students, including your charter students. So we will have the dots available, if you will, to where they are. We'll have to talk about a strategy, whether we actually include them in the forecasts. We'll figure, maybe we separate them out, because technically, you're not really housing them. But kind of a long, roundabout answer to your question, one of the factors I didn't cover, why we need your historical last four years of data, there's a factor we use called mobility factors. And what these are, we exclude those, let's say, study areas or planning areas with any new development. We know we're going to add in the new kids from development from our research. We want to know what happens in your established neighborhoods, how they matriculate through the grades. Do you gain kids through, let's say, housing resales? Or foreclosures, you lose kids, or there's a turnover of some kind and less or more kids come in as a result of that. Inherently, in the way we do our mobility factors, capture the trends of you losing kids, let's say, to charter or you gaining them back from charter. So the trends that have been going on the last two or three years will be folded into our forecast. The tricky part, I've said this before too, is when you do a 10-year forecast, it's a nice round number, but typically I tell all my clients, the next three years are frankly the ones that are the most, ones we can count on the best or believe the best. Once you get beyond that, it gets fuzzier and fuzzier, economy changes, who knows what's going to happen with the housing market down that time. We base everything on current trends. Now, the advantage is that come in the fall, we will do an update. We essentially drop out our oldest student year, which would be 2016, and we bring in 2020. So we're trying to capture the most recent trends without staying too much in the past. So I think a lot of the charter questions that will be inherently in there, but we'll have to focus and see how we're going to address that.
Thank you. Mrs. Javonelli?
Okay, I have a couple of things. Actually, I did a little research and you guys, and you were the best, so I wanted to, I'm excited about that. And so I wanted to let you know that I have every confidence in you. Couple of things I have, so we are a unique county. We have canals that end and you have to drive around to get to the other side. And so your GIS will take that into consideration, as well as like we have a river, well, yeah, the Plissage River that kind of stops people, you know, there's a couple of ways in and out and around. So that will all be in your forecast, right? So then my other question really pertains to the census. Since we don't have that information right now with the census, how is that going to play into your forecast? And will it have to be something that we have to update down the road after we have the census information?
To answer your question, I mean, the census data is more there for, I'll call it, the way we do things, more complimentary. Where our data is even more focused in the census, we're taking your data, your specific students, where they live, it's not general. We look at, as you can see in the reports, you see census data on there. To give you a little background, for the GIS wave of new census data, could take up to a year for that to get, come out. So it might not be till the, towards the end of our year and a half to where the new data of the census is out there to digest. But I don't want you to worry about that, because I said, our data is going to be so specific to your district, so unique, that there's, there'll be a time, you have to trust me, I've done enough of the board presentations to know, when we show you the level of detail we go to, I get to eventually, it might be technical, a lot of head nodding comes into play, because you could see how I could tell a story about your district and I, I have set foot in it, but I could have done it from my office without ever setting foot with the level of detail that we go through. We're going to have enough checks and balances with your staff if we're omitting a development, because even the census data, those forecasts are kind of percentage increases, we're going to be very specific. We're going to know where all the projects are and this part of your district's going to grow faster than another. Maybe this area doesn't generate as many students because of the price of the homes versus another part. Census data tends to be a little more general. So I don't know, I don't sound, I hope I didn't dance around your question, but we always look to it, it will always be there. And like I said, some of the things I showed you, I downloaded last week, it's a little too early in the year, but there will be eventually some 2020 and their forecast and we could line it up with ours. And don't forget, they only go out five on some of these things, we're going to go out 10, and individually.
No, I'm excited to see your forecast, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Ms. Gittens?
My question had to do with the census as well, and also welcome. The first question is, you talk about study areas. What number of students are we talking about in a study area?
If you want, I'll go back real quick just to show you that one slide again. This is a sample of what it's more or less going to look like. Each of these, and I may, if you want, I'll explain a little bit how we arrive at these shapes, if you will. The first thing we do is we have your overall district boundary, start with one big polygon. Then we look at your, in your case, your zones. So we'll break maybe one big polygon into, you know, four or five. Then we look at your sub areas, maybe that breaks it up into another 10 or 15 areas. And then we, then look at your major roads, freeways, waterways, you have a lot of barriers, if you will. So those will be incorporated. And we break them up as best we can at first. And then once we have your student data mapped, we have the ability in our software to count, as we're doing this, how many students are in an area. And for example, you kind of see up here in the right corner, 479, 480, and 481 below. At one point, that could have been one polygon and we see that, let's say, there's 300 students in there. Then we say, okay, let's take some major roads or roads and break it up into smaller pieces so it's more evenly distributed, if you will. And you could also see sometimes you get some funny shapes, but we use the parcel lots, backlots. We don't just draw a diagonal line across there, and it might look funny if I took the parcels away, but we do go with the lot lines, we trace over them. We try to keep, again, an area that you would call a neighborhood intact. So you might have some areas more than 100, you might even have some that have 200 in the area because it's a large apartment complex. And you don't want to split that up. Maybe you do, maybe you don't, but usually you don't. So because of that constraint, it's one study area. Because the way the shapes of the streets, you might have a study area that has 25 students. So on average, that's kind of what I'm giving you here, is about 100, but they vary and they are kind of, kind of look like this. And these will be the building blocks for your future combined zones. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that, but my next question, it has to do with the census as well, because especially in the area I represent, there's a lot of undercounting. So the question is, if you use census tract information along with all of the information you have, what's the correlation between the census tract information, your study areas and proximity zones? Because if you're, even if you're using a little bit of that census information and we're, you know, 20,000 less than we should be, how is that affecting? And I know you answered the other question saying, we'd wait in 10, in the 10 years, there would be a change, but how is that affecting us?
Well, a couple of things I want to point out that, that might be obvious, maybe it's not. And this goes for every school district in the country. You're, no one, no district's capturing all the students, whether it's charters, private schools, other districts they go to. There is a whatever we'll, we'll call a capture rate. You might have a very high capture rate or a very small capture rate, and it varies by area. The important thing that you will always see with us, with our dots, these are your students. We're not missing anybody. Everyone that's attending one of your schools, your charters, is accounted for. When you do the census or you look at that level, they're more looking at population, which is everybody. You know, they're looking at all ages. And even if we focus on ages, let's say, five to 18, which are the majority of your students, again, like I said, you're not capturing everybody. They'll have more, more than times not, you'll have more in the census. And when you see census tracts, that's another thing. We don't necessarily use the census tracts unless we have to, to form our study areas. There's not going to be typically an exact, if we overlaid them on top of the study areas, I think our study areas will be smaller, which is actually probably a little more accurate. Maybe a group two or three and that would be a census tract, maybe, it varies.
And that's what I was talking about, because if, if we, if you show that there's, you know, this number of five-year-olds, because that's the ones that we know in the schools, what about the five-year-olds that are not?
Yeah, and that's, but that's a whole nother topic. I mean, we, we, on a separate thing, we do, again, what we call capture rate studies. We have districts, you're not one of them, but there's a lot of districts in California that are losing students. And so capture rates become an extremely important study that they do for marketing. And they want to know, okay, we're going to have to go after these kids that we're losing to charters or private schools, or they don't like, whatever the reason is. So rather than putting mailers or flyers out all district-wide, they'll use a capture rates to look at certain zones that they should focus on the most. So like I said, every district doesn't capture all their students. And as you mentioned, there's parts of your district they'll capture more or less. And we could probably do some kind of a version of that, but that's, we find that's mostly for the districts that are having problems keeping their kids and want to add more to them. You have quite amazing growth in your district, so, but maybe there's a part of your district you want to focus on and we could help you with that as well.
Okay, I know we have, we had 10 minutes slotted for this time, we're like into 30-something right now.
Sorry.
Do we have a couple of questions that we could, because I know you're going to come back to us again.
Probably several times, yeah.
Correct?
And if you have any other questions, direct them to them and we'll answer your questions.
They have been answered. Okay, well, thank you so much, I really appreciate everything.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda is the capital project update and Mr. Scott Rickenbacker.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, this is your February construction capital update. I'm Scott Rickenbacker, Director of Construction. The update that you currently have, a lot of progress, this is three weeks in advance of the meeting, has been updated, so I'll speak to some of the items as we flip through the pages. Central Energy Plant, the only change to this particular, we're doing Cape Elementary School, HVAC controls, Riverdale High School, Fort Myers HVAC, a continuous phase of Fort Myers HVAC, and we're in the process of addressing and assessing the GMP for Idabaker Phase 3. The Varsity Lakes CEP renovation will be going back to maintenance and they will be using a GSA contract to manage that through the maintenance department. New construction, I'm not sure how many of you have been able to drive past Gateway High School, go Eagles.
Every day.
We are complete with 93 panels erected for Building A. So if you were there last week and you go by seven days later, 93 panels have been installed. They're starting 14 more panels for our Building E, which is a central energy plant, and then the crane will begin demobilization until we have another set of panel pores for another building to come. So as of today, you drive by and you'll see the main academic building standing. Our structural steel also started getting delivered on Monday, so we have welders out there and the ironworkers are beginning some of the interior skeletal structure, erection and welding. So that was 93 panels, 15 a day, seven days was the projection, and they're right on New middle schools, as of the 10th of February, we began construction. We issued the notice to proceed and OAK construction is out there. We previously had remobilized the tortoises. So construction has begun for MM Middle School. Probably one of the most difficult contracts I've ever had to execute and Dr. Atkins can appreciate that. Portable projects. Canopies, all the canopies are done with the exception of Harnes-March Middle. Right now, we are at 65% complete with Harnes-March. That's a difficult job, we have about another three weeks to complete that. In the attached photo, you'll see why. That is the canopy that crosses over the back road to connect the building to the portable structures. That's where our maintenance, food deliveries and so forth go through that area. So it's a large structure with large footings that'll remain there. Portable for Gateway, the staging school, we've had several meetings now, the design is already underway. We've met with both principals for both Lee High Senior High School plus Nikita for Gateway in addition to the Veterans Park teachers, because we're going to be sharing the infrastructure and the roadways. So we're having those design meetings, so once the plan is created, we have a layout that's been accepted by all parties. And we have our permitting with South Florida Water Management for a temporary use of that site without any major permitting issues. And that, that'll house 20, 21 classroom portables in addition to all the administration, clinic and food serving trailers as well. Renovation projects, Transportation East Buckingham, we have everything ready to go there, we're just isolating the funding line to support that. That was an existing South Florida Water Management violation from 2008 that we had to rectify. So hopefully that we'll get that project kicked off soon. It shouldn't take more than a few weeks to have that completed. Heights Playground, ESE 88 is complete, we're only waiting, hopefully it's being delivered today for a handicap swing and a handicap bench to be delivered, and that completes that Division of Office of Civil Rights violation and that will be 100% complete. James Stevens remodel, we are right now walking the school, designing, and the contract is in the process, waiting to be executed with a U-Work authorization. So that's part of your big five, sir. Roofing projects, you'll be voting on several of these for the rankings, the designers have already been picked, that's Cypress Lake High School and North Fort Myers High School. In addition, we started the RFQ process for the Lee Peck Building here as well. So all of these are going to be projects we hope to get going in the next couple of months moving forward. Traffic Studies, okay. Right now for Diplomat, we have 50% plans and we're reviewing those plans. We have them in hand, we'll be moving forward. Heights Elementary is off the table. Our recommendations for this period in time, our recommendations were, by the civil engineers, would require us to go into some wetlands, which we may or may not have authority to do and would require mitigation. So that's not a project that we're going to be able to bite off this summer and it's going to take probably another year to work through that, see what funds are billed, see what other options. what other options could possibly take there. Three Oaks Survey, we have a traffic impact study is currently in the design process. As soon as the TIS, Traffic Impact Study, is complete, we will begin the physical designs. Tree Line Elementary, our drawings, our final construction drawings are 50% complete, so in another few weeks, we should have the 100% drawings, we can engage with our construction manager, and that too will be, begin this summer as well. Completes the capital update, I have the change order, monthly change order report, is that anything, anybody's interested?
Are there any, thank you very much for doing this, I really, I really appreciate seeing all this, and especially the turtles.
Is, are there any questions? Someone go to the side. Ms. Gittens? Okay. On the main academic building at Gateway, and when I first saw the first wall go up, it was so exciting. It's a wonder I don't get into accidents, God forbid, because every time I go by, I'm looking at what's up now. The structure that's up there now is just one building, the academic building, right?
That is correct.
And what else is, is there another?
You have four more buildings. You have your, your cafeteria gym building, you have your media center, a black box, an art building. You also have your CEP plant, which is the main mechanicals, air conditioning and pumping, and then you have your outside concession building that we put up out at the sport, athletic field.
It just, I mean, looking at the expanse of all the land, it looked small once the walls went up. I'm like, well, aren't they going to spread that out some more? But, it just looked small.
It's interesting, if you look at it from the street, it's a building.
Then it's different.
If you go and stand inside the slabs, you realize just how massive the structure is.
Right, okay. The other question, oh, and kudos on Harnes-March, I was over there the other day, and every time I go, there's a couple of teachers that have portables that are hugging me and saying, "Oh, we're so happy we're getting the covers." The other thing, what will happen to the portables that are used for staging Gateway at Lehigh Senior?
Well, that's an interesting question. With the numbers that you just spoke about earlier with the proximity piece, I'm sure that Dominic and his staff will have a placement for them somewhere, most likely in that zone.
Okay, are we, well, I'll ask this offline. And James Stevens, it's a remodel, not a rebuild?
No, it's a, it's a remodel, we're not rebuilding, we're taking existing classrooms, and we're remodeling 12 of those classrooms to have the small children's bathrooms in them, where all of the equipment and the toilets and the sinks that are much reduced level for the pre-K children, so, and we're just creating a small, single-point entry for that. That area will be fenced off with an access point from the back street behind the school for those people that are engaged in that program to come in, so that we, we have that secure boundary between the regular James Stevens primary children and the pre-K children.
It's a separate building that's on the, that's disconnected to that?
Correct, these are, these are two buildings that were originally for a middle school design, that were not being utilized, and the pre-K program that you folks have unveiled and that you're going to be using all over the district, this was a way to recoup that building space, make use of it, and just modify it with the bathrooms and some casework for the pre-K students.
Are we looking at any time using that property across the street from James Stevens?
I'm not aware of any use, I know the community uses it for sports fields and soccer, but what you have out there is you have a play pavilion, you have water, you have electric, and we actually have all of the storm drainage capped and underneath that grass field area, so at some point in time, if you ever chose to go, you could.
That's right, okay, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Dr. Atkins, Tyler Robriste, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, is that going to be yours, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, part of my board comments this afternoon were, I'm really happy you're getting some help.
Well, we went from six to now we're seven.
Well, you could probably use a little bit more help, but I'm happy that you're getting some, and I wanted you to hear that.
I appreciate it. It's actually, that position is a joint funded between ourselves and Food Service, so, starting this month, because this is about how far in advance we have to get going, he'll be going and working with the Food Service people, preparing for all that federal kitchen updating we do over the summer, and then once the summer work, the kitchens are open, school's back in session, he'll come back on my side at a table and work on many of the ISOC projects that are coming out.
Great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just wondering what kind of work is being done, or is going to be done at, at Lehigh for traffic patterns, and I'm assuming that buses for the kids that are going to be going to the Gateway's portables, that's going to be a separate, it's, they're going to come in separately, or they're going to come in the same way? Are we having to, to make major road changes on that, on that campus to accommodate?
No, not for Lehigh Senior High School. We brought transportation into the mix, as well as all of the principals and safety. They're actually going to be coming on the same buses, so the temporary staging Gateway students will be on the same buses utilizing the bus loop at Lehigh Senior High School. We'll create a gate opening so that those children can transition into the portable complex. The actual parents will be coming in off of the road that feeds the elementary school. We will create an access point, a parent parking area, and a staff parking area in that grassy knoll, which will be removed once we're complete, unless, of course, the schools would want the parking for future need.
Okay, yeah, that answers it.
It's, gunnery is gonna, it's going to be difficult, but, you know.
Yeah, so the parents are going to be in a different area, the staff in that area, but the Gateway students are going to be coming in on the buses.
That is correct.
With the Lehigh, and so, they'll just be, kind of, the first word that came to my mind was herded, a certain way.
Controlled pandemonium.
Yeah, that's, that's the other question, how they will be guided to their school, and, you know, since it's all freshmen, they won't be, they won't have access into, into Lehigh Senior, or?
No, ma'am. They'll come off the bus loop directly through a fence gate with a sidewalk directly into the portable complex. And that's, there's administrators and teachers that will support that effort. The roadway will, it's going to be tough, just like it is everywhere, couple of weeks of heartburn, but once everybody understands the pattern and the times, it'll work.
Yeah, and I guess all of us, I apologize to the parents of the freshmen out there, but all of us who've worked in education with freshmen, probably the word herded is as good as any, because they need to be directed in the right way, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, are there any other, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, no, forgive me if this question has been answered, but I don't recall. Back when Linda Mayer was at Benita Middle School, she worked very closely with Ben Nelson and the then-city council to create a turnaround within that open area in front of the school. And the question I had asked is, given the city council's plan to recreate that section of Terry, which they're working on now, was any thought given to doing that turnaround, or has the new city council just, you know, dismissed it out of hand, or they don't recall that it was ever done, or? I, I know that you mentioned that Kathy Ebon might have an answer to that, but I don't see her here, so.
I can find out for you, I don't know, off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any turnaround, but it's a great bargaining tool to help get our drainage swale in front of Benita High School cleaned.
Oh.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Are there any other questions? Do you want to go ahead and continue on your, on your next?
Unless you want a, any change order report?
Any questions on the change order?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have academic services, and it is the elementary primary grade support and MTSS. And if everybody will introduce themselves, that would be wonderful. And welcome, ladies.
Good afternoon. My name is Bethany Quinseyberry, I am the Director for Elementary Curriculum and Instruction.
Oh, and I'm Shelley Taylor, I'm the Coordinator for Graduation.
And Tammy Scott, Coordinator for Multi-Tierred System of Supports, MTSS.
So, we are here to talk to you about one of my most favorite topics, as a former kindergarten teacher, elementary primary grade support, and as we said, MTSS. So I'm going to kind of go through some of the supports that we give all primary students, and when we speak to primary students, we're speaking to K to 2. And then we'll talk a little bit about our interventions for those students. First, this was even a surprise for me, whenever we ran the numbers, we currently have 18,179 students in our schools in K to 2, which includes 1,048 teachers. So, when we're thinking of, of K to 2, it is a very large number of our population and a very large number of our instructional staff, especially in elementary schools. So some of the instructional support that we provide for all, first starts with a program called Really Great Reading, which is our phonics program. So, about a year ago, maybe two years ago, we implemented Really Great Reading across our district in K to 2. Last year, we really tightened it up to be systematic in who received that program and who received certain interventions. So in kindergarten, they receive Countdown, which is phonics and phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. In first grade, they receive Blast, same program, but it's just a different part of the program, they receive Blast. In second grade, they receive HD Word, this is for all students. Once they get into second grade, if they test low in their phonics abilities, they receive Blast, a second section of Blast for intervention as well. When they go into third grade, if they still have phonics holes, they test into one of those programs, and we continue that all the way to fifth grade. So even though phonics is part of our core program in K to 2, it continues as an intervention all the way through fifth grade. We also have curriculum maps and instructional guides for ELA, math, science, and writing, all the way down to kindergarten. And we also provide achievement level descriptors embedded into our instructional guides, all the way down to kindergarten. Achievement level descriptors refers to Level 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, like what's on our standardized assessments. So if a student is performing at a Level 1 on that standard, we provide activities and resources for teachers to be able to teach that student at that level, and then progress up. We also provide either Sanford Harmony or Second Step, which is our emotional social support curriculum in all, all grade levels, K to 5. And then, of course, you've heard this year, we have began Safe and Smarter Kids for our health curriculum. Some instructional, instructional supports for professional development that we provide is our Leading and Learning Teams. We have Leading and Learning Teams for ELA and math, all the way down to kindergarten. We also provide DIBELS training and Next Steps, which I'm going to speak a little bit about what?
What is DIBELS?
I was, I'm going to speak a little about, a little bit about what DIBELS is. On the next slide, I'll talk about it. And then we also provide Close Reading Training, which is instructional practice for how you're teaching the students in small group, using a passage or a story. And then, the Really Great Reading program that I was referring to, we provide ongoing training and school support. So we have quite a few schools that receive additional support with Really Great Reading, meaning there's a trainer there very often. And then we also provide support here at the district office and through our Leading and Learning. Our curriculum team supports kindergarten through second grade as well. We have an ELA, math, and science team that pushes out for that support. They go into the PLC meetings, they model in classrooms, and then they give overall PD in the schools as well. So you asked about DIBELS. So DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Learning Skills. It is a progress monitoring tool that is used across the country, and that our state actually used to use, it was required for K to 2, probably seven, eight, seven, eight years ago. So what we found last year, when we started digging into our data, yes, we give progress monitoring through STAR, but STAR gives everything whenever we're looking, and we really wanted to be able to dig down into the individual fluency, phonics, phonological awareness holes in our K1 and 2, to ensure they were ready for comprehension when they got into third grade. And so, last year, we initiated DIBELS, but it wasn't really tight. We were trying to make sure that teachers got used to the progress monitoring, got used to how to administer the assessment, and then this year, we've really tightened it up and started data protocols with the Leading and Learning Team, with schools, as well as with the assistant principals when they come down for their training. So you'll see a little bit of data in front of you. We take it three times a year, and so, quarter one is actually in October, quarter two is in January, and then quarter three is in April. For kindergarten, in quarter one, we had 47.5% of our students that were at very low risk, so that's going to be your blue. But in quarter two, it dropped to 32%. Then we had 15% that were green, that part actually increased to 20%, so our blues were falling to green. And then our red, which is going to be our most significant need, were 20.9%, and that increased to 26.1%. So what this tells us is, as our students come in and the benchmarks get harder, we are, we need to increase our support for ensuring that the students rise to that benchmark. The same for first grade, 72.6% of our students were considered blue or green, so low risk, and in quarter two, it was 62%. So it's a trend across our grade levels of ensuring that our students have the fluency that they need in those foundational supports before they get up to comprehension. Then for second grade, second grade's a little different, because by that point, the assessment no longer has phonics or phonological awareness, it only tests on oral, oral word fluency, so it's testing the number of words they read per minute and how many mistakes they have. For second grade, we were 65.8% in quarter one, and it dropped to 61.3%. So, we are definitely seeing a trend and a need for increasing those foundational skills in our K to 2, but maintaining the rigor and the standards-based instruction as well. So that's a very, very thin balance for our K to 2 teachers, is ensuring that their 90-minute reading block is rigorous, and that we are teaching the standards that the students need, but at the same time, in our intervention, maintaining those foundational skills and really systematic interventions for those students, you know, all the way down, if they're in second grade, all the way down to those kindergarten skills of basic phonics, and ensuring that we are filling all of those holes before they go on to, to needing comprehension. So this is our progress monitoring for STAR. In 1819, so in last year, we had 5,787 students in second grade, and our score was 54% at this time. This year, we have increased in our second grade by 174 students, and our ELA has increased up to 58%. So overall, we're seeing improvements with our overall progress monitoring. It is our, our most at-risk kids that we really need to focus on, to ensure that they continue to move in their foundational skills. I just wanted to show that we have some schools that are on a pilot for iReady, and so we have 21 elementary schools that are no longer giving STAR, they're actually assessing an iReady and using the iReady program, which is a much more rigorous platform. It is on, not just foundational, it's on the rigor of the standards that students will see later in FSA, and it is based off of end-of-year goals. So when you, when you look at this data, those students that are green have already met first-grade achievements, or already met second-grade benchmarks, and so when you look at that data, it's, you know, it reads a little different, it looks low, but really those are kids that are already done, like they've mastered everything that they need to master in first grade or in second grade. Kindergarten, although there is a data point there, it's only 15 students, they, we don't test kindergarten iReady in our window, and so we're not able to reflect that data. So in reading, wrong spot, sorry. So, in reading, wrong spot, sorry. Went faster than my hands were going. In reading for iReady, the fall in first grade was 19% and it increased 23% to 42%. And then, for second grade, 29 to 49. So, in that rigorous program, we are seeing a lot of growth in our, in our first and second grade students. I receive a lot of positive feedback as well from those schools, from those teachers. And it's not just a computer program. It actually gives the teachers the resources that they need to run small groups and different activities. And then, this is math. We see the same thing. 11% to 35% in first grade and 19 to 36%. So, we're seeing those increases in iReady. So, then for math, we have formative assessments for our progress monitoring. They, for the formative assessments for ELA, for K-2 is DIBELS. And so, then for math, they have standards-based assessments. Those formative assessments are ungraded. They're standards-based. They're very rigorous. And what we use those for is we take that data and then we go back and we make sure that we're, we're reteaching those standards that the, the students haven't And I'll move on.
All right. So, for Multi-Tiered System of Supports, everything that Dr. Q just explained to you, that should really be able to touch the majority, the major, mega-major majority of our students, right? But we know that some of our students don't always come to the table at the same level, okay? So, the way that Multi-Tiered System of Supports comes in is we take a look at all of the data elements that are afforded to us through all the different programs and the different formative assessments. And teachers, through problem-solving teams, they try to fill in those smaller gaps. So, while we're looking at the standards, the grade-level standards as a whole, in our lens for an intensive support, we would need to be very laser-focused on a specific skill. So, currently, we have almost 1,000 students in K-1 and 2 that are being served through a Multi-Tiered System of Supports, Tier 3 Support System. And that would be the most intensive supports. What that would look like in a classroom would be small group instruction. It could be different instructional materials. It could be additional instructional time. But most importantly, we do collect data on a very consistent basis, and that would be a weekly basis, because we have to be able to come to the table as a problem-solving team and take a look at that data to decide, okay, is this intervention working? Is it not working? If it's not, why? And then, all of the students that are being provided that intervention, if they are all performing except one student that is not performing, then we know the intervention in and of itself is right, but we have to find out a little bit more. So, we have to dig a little bit deeper. Oftentimes, that's when we are consulting with our school psychologists or other members of the problem-solving team through Multi-Tiered System of Supports.
Awesome. And this is where I can jump in as a coordinator for graduation and just talk about how exciting the alignment is where, yes, we focus on the data at the high school level and we look at the four-year grad rate, but we also know deep down, if students are not ready, they're not prepared from level to level, then obviously, that's going to set us up for failure. It's going to lead to more dropouts. So, we're looking at dropout prevention measures. This is where the early warning system comes into play. And so, we're really working with problem-solving teams so that they understand what's behind the whole child, attendance, behavior, and classroom performance. It's really interesting to start looking at even our kindergarten, first and second grade at quarterly course failures, just dream, being very proactive in ensuring that the problem-solving teams understand how they're addressing, you know, is that a universal approach to what's going on, like Tammy was saying? Is this a targeted approach or is this an individual approach? So, that's where the alignment from pre-K to K comes in to support our primary students.
And then, for our ESE supports, there's an awful lot of collaboration that goes on for general education students as well as students that have been identified with a disability. Through our Child Find program, we had, so far this year, 224 referrals and 206 of those students are eligible for services. So, that's a, that's a great thing. We're catching them early and hopefully catching them up. There are behavior supports for general education students in addition to what we have been able to provide in the past, and that is through the reallocation of IDEA funding. So, what that looks like is we have learning resource specialists and behavior specialists that support all students. So, our learning resource specialists are going in the classrooms. They're modeling different strategies for the teachers to use. They're working with the students themselves and then helping us on the problem-solving end to ensure that we are doing, we're headed in the right direction. There is professional development. Fidlers provides the Reading Competence Competency 2 class, inclusion, professional development. And last summer, there was professional development for teachers in the behavior, intensive behavior classroom and the intensive intervention classrooms. This summer, what the training is going to do, it's like a, a little cadre, if you would, just for primary students. So, that'll be an exciting opportunity that we've never done in the past. Champs is also provided. Every Thursday, there is professional development for any teacher in the district as well as administrators. And that's about it.
So, what are our, what are our next steps? First, we are currently working on a primary summer program. We're in the process of finalizing the ins and outs of the program for who will be eligible, where we will hold the sites. But we are hoping to have kindergarten through five at our Title I schools, but then Kinder, rising first graders, so end-of-year kindergarten students, rising second graders, end-of-year first grade students that are in danger of retention. So, they would have been on the retention list to have a summer program for them to help them to catch up before the next school year. We also are working with pre-K alignment and expansion. In a previous presentation, they were speaking to pre-K expansion. Pre-K alignment, Jeannie LaFountain, Tiffany, ESE through Teresa Bowen and myself meet every week to discuss alignment of pre-K all the way through three so that we can truly begin to be a pre-K to 12 school district. One of the first pieces that we're working on with that is our curriculum. So, when we go into the adoption year, this upcoming year for ELA, how can we ensure that the curriculum that we're using in kindergarten aligns with the curriculum that we're using in, in pre-K so that it's an easier transition? We're also beginning discussions for innovative practices. So, we're trying to explore different ways of increasing our instructional time with our students. We have also done research on what's called a Young 5 program. It's a model that they use in the state of Michigan. It's state-funded through their FTE program, but it, it allows students who are right on the edge, like they turn five August 30th, or they turn five, you know, right before the cutoff and are eligible for kindergarten but aren't maybe quite ready for kindergarten. And the families understand that they aren't ready but can't necessarily afford pre-K for another year. And so, they, they send them to kindergarten. How can we have a transitional year to support those students more in their, more in their foundational supports so that then they're ready for kindergarten? And it would be a parent decision. We're also considering smaller class sizes for K-2 and increasing our dedicated resources for primary. We, as we, I said earlier, we, our team supports K-5, but in the schools, a lot of the support is requested for 3 to 5 because those are our tested subject areas. And so, we want to ensure that we are supporting our K-2 teachers with just as much in those students as we do our tested subject areas. And then, one of the things that Title I is also providing is the Kids Read Now Summer Program for all of our second grade students. It is a program where they send books home over the summer and the students are able to kind of take like an AR test and get rewards and different things through it. And then, they send them a new book. They get up to nine books over the summer to help to increase that, that summer reading and decrease the summer slide. I think that's it. You have any questions?
Questions, Ms. Giovinelli?
I just had one, how small, the class size is how much smaller, like what, what do you talk, what numbers, what are you talking?
Did I say 20? We are still discussing.
So, we are, we are just having conversations about the budget. One of the primary, when I speak with Dr. Desmores and her team, she asks from academic services, what are some of the areas of focus for you? We talked about ELL support, student services, and reducing the class size really in primary are some major focus areas that we have. So, we're just in the early stages of those conversations. So, we don't have a set number of what that would look like right now.
Okay. Because my concern was, would be, well, that means more teachers than we don't have. That's all. So, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
So, as I tour schools, I'm getting, I've told Dr. Spiro before that I'm getting really positive feedback about the supports that the schools are getting, which really is in sharp contrast to what I've heard in the past. And your names in particular come up quite frequently. So, I want to commend you on the support that you're giving to schools. I do have a question. What about enrichment? Is that different staff, different presentation? Because I understand the focus on MTSS and students who are struggling, but are we also focusing on other students?
Yes. So, enrichment would be included in, in the curriculum department. And that goes to what I was speaking to with iReady. So, iReady puts the students in a path that is much more rigorous and that pushes them all the way to their personal academic ability. And then, it also gives the teacher, it's called a teacher toolbox. So, it also spits out resources for the teacher to be able to use with those students. So, the achievement level descriptors that I was referring to, let's say I'm working on point of view and I am a Level 5, but she's a Level 2, that's going to give me those resources that we are still learning the same standard, but I'm learning it at a Level 5 and she's going to scaffold up from a Level 2 to get her up to where she needs to be.
My, my last question is, Ms. Taylor, I ran into you at the football field on Saturday and you told me about something we read about in our board update, which was coffee cards provided. Wasn't you that told me that?
Yes.
Coffee cards that were provided by Jimmy Thompson in maintenance. Can you talk about that?
Absolutely. I would love to spotlight that. So, we are, we're, we're always looking at our chronic absenteeism data because we know that if kids are not in the seat, then, you know, that's our first barrier. So, right now, we have an attendance campaign that we are supporting facilitating for Edgewood. And it is, it starts next week. But one of the things that's very difficult for schools because it's, it's a little bit time-consuming is it's really getting down to the root cause and looking at the data. So, of course, when students are tardy or they're absent, having a team to come in and, and be able to talk to the parents and understand, okay, what's the cause of this? And we know that not coming to school on time or all day is a symptom of something else that's going, going on. So, what we did was we went out and we, we stayed in the front office and we talked to families that came in tardy. And we analyzed the data. And at that time, just for speaking with us to try to build relationships, we gave them a, a printed-off free coffee if you're on time next Tuesday. So, it kicks off. We're calling it Car Line Coffee. So, if you would like to come to Edgewood on Tuesday morning, you can get...
Be on time, though.
You have to be on time. But we're also starting, we're initiating what's called the Walking School Bus. So, that starts that morning, too. Adult staff are going to be in yellow t-shirts. We are going to meet students in the neighborhood and walk with them to school. And we're going to pilot that for the week and see if that helps improve attendance as well.
That's really good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The staff has also come up with some really great suggestions in regards to utilizing not instructional time, but it's time that students would have been at PE. So, we have two-week campaign of which grade level will have the best attendance percentage. And they have a hockey demonstration. And then, the next, the two weeks after that, there is another rally for it. And there will be a K-9 demonstration. So, the staff at Edgewood, their PLC for attendance, has been working really, really hard to try to encourage and motivate the kids to come to school.
And what time is that? It's...
It is early. Would you like to come at 5:00 AM and start brewing?
Five o'clock.
Coffee about 6:30.
So, 7:25 is when the students will start coming on campus.
Yeah. We're going to meet them at 7:10 at the corner of Seminole and Princess.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're walking all week.
All week.
If you, if you'd like coffee specially made, there's a few places you can stop in the district. For example, Fort Myers High School, I know that the students in Life Skills Class will take your order and, and special order some coffee for you. Cape Elementary, they, they do it there as well, the elementary students. And I'm sure there's others across the district. But it's neat to see some of these applied skills that are being, that teachers are, are doing that actually, I mean, the kids get to do something real. It's a fundraiser and it's also something I think that teaches them valuable stuff, so.
Just going to have regular coffee?
Yep.
Those students that you're mentioning, they make cappuccinos and lattes and all that stuff.
Shout out to our maintenance department. We collaborate across departments and maintenance has already said they have a connection. And we have 100 Dunkin' Donuts gift cards that are coming to us to help incentivize the staff and the families as well.
That was the piece that totally blew me away when you told me about that story.
That was the piece. I'm glad I got that.
Well, I mean, the whole thing is awesome, but the fact that, I just don't picture the maintenance guys caring all that much about, you know, kids being late or what's going on in the classroom and...
They really do.
For, I know, I know they do, but just, just, it's the cross, like you said, the cross.
Good. Thank you for mentioning that because they also are providing Edgewood with a washer and dryer for students as they have, through problem-solving, they have realized that there is a barrier that they need to help their students overcome. So, within the next couple of weeks, a washer and dryer will be there and we will be making detergent for them.
Awesome. Thank you. And that's another thing, you know, and thank you for saying that because most people have no idea that we do have washers and dryers in some of our schools for our students. So, when you speak to the, the public about that, when you're out there, they're like, what are you talking about? So, thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely.
Sorry, Ms. Kittens.
It's okay. Did I hear you say, and Mr. Savage is going to smile when I say this, but did I hear you say that iReady is a part of the curriculum now so they don't have to go to a separate class to do iReady?
We currently have 21 schools in the pilot and we are going, we are looking to expand next year.
But they stay in the classroom and it's curriculum-based?
Yes. It is. And it's school-wide for those 21 schools.
Oh, awesome. Okay. He, I told you he would smile. There's a story, there's a story behind that. And on the MTSS slide, you talked about restorative practices. We kind of talked about that in our last meeting a little bit and, and kind of solidifying that in schools. If you can address that a little bit. And then, also, you, on that slide, it talks about interrupted schooling.
Great questions. So, restorative practices has been Dr. Spiro's, one of three things that I constantly hear him say this year, consistently, not constantly, sorry. And restorative practices is one of the top three.
Back to iReady for you.
And there is a training that is being rolled out. We are working very hard as a student services team directed by Ms. Jessica Duncan in regards to providing additional opportunities in the evening for our administrators to come and have training on restorative practices and then continuing that lens through the summer as well. So, it, it is on the forefront right now. And we definitely embrace that and encourage all of our, of our schools to be utilizing it. You will see, as we are working on our Student Code of Conduct book right now for a revision update, more of the language of restorative practices built in. And we have some really great models from other districts that have been provided to us.
And how are, how are the staff persons selected to participate either in that evening or summer program?
Right now, it's a voluntary basis in regards to the training. It is something that has come up through surveys from administration that they would like more professional development in restorative practices. We know that when we are working with schools, we work with them individually and have those conversations in regards to what are our alternatives rather than suspension. I know that one of the comments made a couple of weeks ago is how are the teachers, what is going on with the teachers? And it's very important that we are always asking that question. So, even though we want to reduce our suspension rates, what are we doing to support our teachers? So, that is always in that conversation and ensuring that our teachers feel supported as well.
Is there, we talked a lot last... And is there, we talked a lot last meeting about supplements. Is there a supplement or a possibility of a supplement for teachers doing that?
Not a worry of a supplement.
And that may be a Dr. Desmore question, I'm not sure.
We're not currently looking at a supplement. It's not something we can, that we wouldn't consider, but when we talk about restorative practices, it's part of what we want with the culture, that all teachers use that as something daily as an alternative to sending a child to the office or an administrator sending a child home. So, Ms. Scott shared some of the things we're doing. We also have Dr. Angela Mann coming to our next principal meeting, and part of her focus will also be on teacher retention as we begin to implement restorative practices. So, we're keeping that lens on teacher retention, and then we have onsite support. So, Ms. Scott talked about our CCIS team. We have our equity leads out there working with administrators, and then our learning resource specialists are out giving onsite support. They're supporting students, but also the teachers in learning some different ways that they can support students in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
The other question you asked in regards to interrupted schooling is, is it more specific to, or what is our definition of?
Just definition.
Sure. We are working, last year through our work with Soretta, is capturing our students that are coming new into our district in regards to what instructional level of support they've received in the past. So, now we are able to tag them in regards to having lost instructional time. We know that students are coming to us from other countries that have never been in school, and we need to be able to understand that a little bit better in our data.
So, this is basically then on new students and not interrupted education of current students?
That is correct. So, the definition would be our students that are coming from other countries or programs that have had missed instructional time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yes, thank you for what you've said already. I do have a few questions that focus on, first of all, the makeup of the classrooms. Back in the old days, we would have, you know, like a lower level, average level, and then an advanced level. Do any of the schools still use that kind of homogeneous grouping? Or are all the schools using heterogeneous, which includes ELL students and ESE students and multiple-tiered students in their classes?
There are still a few that use a piece of homogeneously grouping. So, they, they don't do full grouping where they take, you know, they cut off 18, and then they cut off 18, and they cut off 18, but that, they kind of group their lower students together, maybe ones and twos, threes together, and then maybe fours and fives together. So, we do have a few schools that, that still do that. What happens, though, is that just because I'm a level three doesn't mean that I'm a level three in all of the standards. And so, they still have to give interventions and provide differentiation for their students. And so, what most schools have found to be more effective is to heterogeneously group during their 90-minute and 60-minute math block, and then during their intervention, because they all have a set, in elementary, we have a set intervention time, 45 to 60 minutes. During that intervention time, the students walk to read based off of that, whatever standard they're working on. So, I might walk to read for two weeks to Shelley's class because I need this standard, but then I go to Tammy's class the other two weeks because I'm good and I need enrichment. And so, most of the schools follow that, that model instead.
And do we have any comparison on how schools that use one model versus the other, how the kids are faring academically?
We have not tracked that in the past. I can see if there is a way to track that, though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious about that, and frankly, it's another example of, of an inconsistency that we're going to have to really take another look at as we move toward our, our proximity schools. Okay, so, curriculum, we have pre-K through the first couple of primary grades. What about the behavior systems? And honestly, probably five or six years ago, when I was on, I was not a member of the school board, and I was on CSI committee, and I learned at that time that we had rolled out the restorative practices in upper-level grades. And I could never understand that, because really, as you well know, if we lose the kiddos in these early grades, as a matter of fact, you look at your second or third graders, Shelley, you know who has, who's probably going to be a dropout or is going to be, yeah. So, my, my thought is that we need to really, really pour in efforts on, on the pre-K and through second or third grade, because that's where we lose them. What about the behavior piece? Because I've talked to kindergarten teachers and some teachers in the, teaching in the primary grades that frankly have out-of-control kids. And that affects, you know, we've already mentioned the idea that, yes, it's so important to focus on the students that are, that need our extra help, but we need to also be fair to the students who are more, are more developmentally mature. In other words, they, they've already, you know, we have kids that come to kindergarten that don't know how to behave in, in that kind of structure, and we have kids that are in kindergarten that are more controlled, and how do we, how do we balance, how do we balance that?
I'll speak to the core overall, and then I'll let them speak to interventions.
I know, that's a lot I just, sorry.
So, one of the things that, when I spoke to curriculum, is schools are required to use a social or, social and emotional curriculum, which is part of their core. So, they're required to use either Sanford Harmony or a Second Step, and that is an explicit social, emotional, instructional curriculum. I will tell you, as a principal, one of the things that I used to speak to my staff about often was that, especially with primary students, when students come to school and they don't know how to read, we teach them how to read. When they don't know how to do math, we teach them how to do math. But when they don't know how to behave, we punish them. And so, it's our responsibility to teach them how to do these things. And often, teachers just need those resources, and they need those instructional practices to be able to do that. And so, we are working on giving them those resources, and as she spoke to the, the trainings and providing professional development, so that we have positive prevention rather than, you know, trying to put fires out later on. And it really does, as you said, start in kindergarten. That was part of our discussion with that Young Five program as well, is those students that often come in very young, they're developmentally not necessarily behind, but, you know, they're four. And so, how can we support them in, in helping them with the social, emotional before they move into that, that rigorous academic? And so, that was part of that thought process as well. So, I'll let you guys speak to it.
I would just add in the PBIS structures and the work that Chuck Bradley is overseeing at the universal level to ensure that schools have a strong PBIS understanding. So, I know that when Tammy and I go out, others go out, and we look at that student services kind of PLC, and we start looking at the early warning system and which indicators are there. That's where we lead the conversation with, okay, what's working for the majority of the students? And if it's not working, let's really think about what we need to do at the core level.
Yeah, and I, because you are, we do have outliers. You're going to, you know, you're as much profession, as much PBS as you push in or, or best instructional practices, you are sometimes going to have outliers. And then, then how do we address those outliers in those classrooms?
The only other thing, real quick, because I know you're excited to say something, is we, we also have a project with HR, the Art and Science of Innovation, to address the top four priorities that came out of our, our teachers and the concern there. So, I know that there are going to be some really great projects that are around, you know, how, what is distracting teachers from being able to teach? So, I know that there's, there's some actions there.
I just have one other quick, quick thing that meshes, of course, the behavior and the curriculum, because teachers, if, if teachers have even one or two kids that haven't learned the behavioral structures that one needs in kindergarten, first grade, it makes it really difficult to, impossible to run the small group instruction adequately, because you need to be able to trust that they all understand the behaviors that, that they need. And so, you talked about principals getting training in restorative practices. Why haven't we offered this during preschool week as a required training for everyone instead of, as I'm understanding it, instead of making it an option or a summer?
Jessica, you should have came.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that we do have, Ms. Vaughn, we do have 67 current schools in, that have embraced PBIS, and their staff has been trained. They submit their data in regards to those requirements through the Florida PBIS project, and we have more schools that are coming onboard in the summer.
Elementary?
All, elementary, middle, and high. We have 67, yes, that are active. And then, this summer, we are already scheduling our dates for that. We have new schools that are coming onboard. They really follow that framework already, they just haven't officially become PBIS. And then, we have a tier-two training for that cadre of teachers within every building, so they get that next level, that next step. So, just wanted to make sure you are aware of that.
And during preschool week this year, we rolled out our Insights to Behavior program, which is a program we selected specifically because when you go in and get a certain behavior, it gives a teacher step-by-step instructions on some strategies they can use. So, if they're not really familiar, if their toolbox isn't really full, if they're dealing with a challenging behavior, that's one tool they can use, and that is available to all teachers. One of the things that we're working on over the course of this year, because there are also training modules, is attaching those training modules to in-service points so that people can take them and get points for them for viewing them on their own time. On our Thursday classes, these are for ESE points, but they're open to anyone, and some of the things we've offered are Behavior Instruction Part One, Strategies for Challenging Behavior, Behavior Instruction Part Two, Teaching Positive Psychology, Implementing Visual Schedules. We have student-to-student conflict mediation coming up this month. So, we have a number of things that way. Now, that is somewhat limited by seat, so as I'm listening to this conversation, I'm starting to think that maybe there's a way that we could tape those or something and have those available to more teachers in a different format. So, that's something we can look into, too.
And I have no doubt that we offer all of those, but if we're expecting a school to be a PBIS school, my feeling is, I don't know how the rest of the board feels or what's been discussed with staff, but as, as a, as a veteran teacher, my feeling is it needs to be offered to the whole school at the same time. And I'm thinking that it's really important for the elementary, and I'm also thinking that with, with the movement that we have and the new teachers, it, it just isn't, it's just a very strong suggestion that if, if we really want this to work, we need to jump in and embrace the whole thing. And I think it's really important, and I think we offer wonderful courses, but not everybody is available nights or summers, and.
I just.
I'm, I'm, I'm done. I've given.
No, I'd like to clarify just a little bit in regards to PBIS. So, in the summertime, typically about six to eight members of the staff come down for the training for the multi-day session. And what happens is, during preschool week, every school then has their own training that they provide for their staff, and that typically is about an hour or so long, and that's provided within that school structure for preschool week. So, they do receive that information, that training.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry I took so long.
No, it's okay.
Ms. Morgan?
So, following along the same line, behavior. What do those, those programs, Restorative Practice, PBIS, Leader in Me, Learning for Life, Avidup Elementary, what do they have in common and how are they different? Because it seems to me that at some point in the past, we talked about behavior, we talked about common vocabulary, and, you know, to me, you know, we put these programs in, are we evaluating the effectiveness, the fidelity of the implementation, the effectiveness of the implementation? I mean, you know, I just feel like there's a lot. Is it, how do those align?
Go ahead. Yeah, there's a lot there.
The, the specific programs that are on this slide are not, they, with the exception of PBIS, are programs that different, you're right, they're not aligned across the schools. The programs that I was referring to earlier, Sanford Harmony, they are aligned, and that would be, those would be the programs that we would need to begin to track and to see if they're working or what model we need to move into.
Well, why are we investing resources, human and dollars, in programs if we don't know that they're being implemented with fidelity and whether or not they're having an impact? I mean, we're talking about kids who are, I mean, my, I'll, let me just go on to my second question. The other question I have is, you're talking, back in the beginning, you were talking about level one and two students at risk and the progression in the phonics program.
Yes.
So, my first question is this, do you have an expectation that a child coming in kindergarten who is a phonics one or two will be on level by grade two?
Yes.
And, and does that mean that the kids who are, get still remedial in grades three and four are new students in grade two? In other words, are we, do we have an obligation to make certain that what we're doing is every child completes within three years based on when they entered?
Yes, that is what, that is what we are tracking the data for. The data currently, because we, as I said, we just started, but some of our schools, our high-risk schools began many years ago. James Stephens, Franklin Park, Manatee, we began using the Really Great Reading Program at least six years ago. I can tell you, last year at Franklin Park, because I, I called to ask for, for, who tested into what, there were only three students that tested from third grade into fourth grade into Really Great Reading. It didn't necessarily mean that they were a level three, but they didn't have phonics holes, and it was because they had progressed through those programs. So, when they are used with fidelity, yes, that is our goal, is that when they get into fourth grade, really when they get into third grade, they would no longer use those programs with the exception of the new students.
So, who are the kids in third and fourth, yeah, third, fourth, and fifth grade on those programs? Because they're new students, or they're students that we haven't been successful with. Are they all new students?
They're also students that we have not been successful with or who did not use the program before because they didn't have the full three years. They've only had it for last year and now this year. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Really appreciate your time. And we have one more. And that is the Data Chat Midyear Update. And I'm not sure who's speaking, so if you will introduce yourself when you come up.
So, just to put this a little bit in context, what I've asked the team to do is, is every quarter, we bring our school leaders in or the school teams to, to talk to the academic services team. And basically, they look at their quarter-one data, quarter-two data, and then they make adjustments to whatever they feel they need in order to make sure our kids are being successful. So, this is kind of the mid-year report card, so our school leaders have been in and have had these data chats with our executive, academic executive team, and we're here to report to the board basically those findings as of the end of second quarter.
Perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and board members. I'm Clayton Simmons. I'm the executive director for high schools.
I'm Shannon Fletcher, executive director for elementary.
And Denise Carlin, executive director for school development elementary.
And like Dr. Atkins said, we want to give you an update on where we stand with regards to the ABCs in mid-year. When I say ABCs, we're talking obviously about. When I say ABCs, we're talking obviously about attendance, behavior, and classroom success. You're going to hear some common themes as we go through this, and one of the big pushes in all of our schools is developing relationships with our students. That's a big push. And also interventions, because we are in third quarter, and of course, we got to get them ready for the testing season. That being said, here's the team. Ms. Mayer, she is on a bus with Junior Achievement today, so that's where she is.
Yes, Ms. Patrica, you might be interested in that, so we'll report with the board update. She'd ask about Junior Achievement and the one-on-one, so...
She'll be an expert when she gets back. Obviously, our primary goal is to increase this school district to an A school. And that being said, we are going to be focusing on the ABCs, and that's continued to be our focus throughout this entire year and will continue to be our focus. What you're going to see in this slide, this is a little bit, we were talking about the chronically absent students. Those are students that miss 10% more or more of their instructional days. What that means is essentially it's five days per quarter. So that could be up to 20 days a year. We have the district, and I got to give a shout out to Tammy Scott, she's, they've done a great job on tracking this data. And what you can see right here is on the, you can see the 1920 data, but what we asked for, what we got today, which I will share with you, is how do we compare with the chronically absent students from last year? And I'm very proud to say that, you know, the data that just got in today, in the elementary, last year we were, then we round up or round down based on it. We were at 19% chronically absent in the second quarter, and you can see that we're down to 12%. And we are down 5% in middle school. We are down 4% in high school, and we're down 4% in our combo schools. So we've made, you know, considerable headway in all of our schools. I think what you'll see is a lot of that has to do with, you know, like I said, the relationship piece. Next slide, this is just a slide about what we are doing in the schools, but I'm going to talk specifically about, you know, what are we doing individually by levels? If you don't know, all of our schools have something called intervention teams as for attendance. And those are made up of admin, a counselor, the social worker, and a school nurse if it's needed or if it's a medical issue. And what they do is if they notice that a student is starting to fall on that chronically absent, you know, scale, they'll have a meeting, and they'll discuss that student and also get some teacher input on what might be going on in the classroom. And then they create a plan, and then they invite the student and the parents in, and they have an attendance meeting, and they create an attendance contract. And in that contract, there's a number of incentives depending on the level on how we can get the student back where they need to be. And then what also is a vital component of that is the social worker can follow up with home visits if needed. Some of the things they're doing in elementary school that you heard them mention at Edgewood Academy, they're doing the walking bus for the students within two miles. They have incentives for perfect attendance. A lot of them you've seen as you've gone through the schools, you see the door signs where it says, you know, my class is in perfect attendance. They have check-in, checkout systems for the students that are, you know, might be chronically absent. Middle schools, they are inviting the counselors to sit in at lunch with the students and develop relationships and check in and check out with those students. They have for the chronically tardy students, in middle school, they have worked on changing their courses or changing their schedules so that they, if they come in tardy, they miss their elective and not their core class. So they've adjusted that. High schools, many of the high schools have gone to dividing up the chronically absent students by admin, and since we're, you know, all the high school people are at lunch duty anyway, it's a great time to check in with their kids. So one of the schools that started this was Riverdale, and they divided it up, and they, you know, they just went and checked on that child or that student during lunch and just developed a relationship. And what they found is that it had a dramatic impact on those kids then wanting to come to school because they had an adult advocate in the building. So, and that spread amongst a lot of the high schools where they have that parent or that student advocate or staff advocate that works with them. Also, in some of the high schools, you'll see attendance update boards for parent pickup. They have perfect attendance field days, they have award ceremonies, attendance certificates, ice cream socials, and they even have given away perfect attendance parking spots. And a lot of the principals have given up, or the assistant principals have given up their parking spot, so that that's an incentive for them to do well. And I think that, you know, taking the time to develop the relationships with the students is paying the dividends, and you'll see that as well when we talk a little bit about the behavior. So positive results so far with our chronically absent students.
All right, thank you.
So now we're going to transition to the B of the ABCs, and that is our focus on decreasing out-of-school suspensions. And we take a look at our percentage of students with one or more out-of-school suspensions. That's our measure that we utilize. So as you can see, when you look from Quarter One to Quarter Two, while we are increasing in that area, we want to let you know that overall, from last year to this year, we are down to 1.7% overall. So that's very exciting. But there's still more work to do. Until that number hits zero or darn close to it, we are going to continue to go at this because our number one goal is to have children in school, in class, learning every day. They do not learn by sitting in the office or sitting in a timeout room, or worse yet, sitting in their living room. We want them in school, that's key. So what are we doing exactly in the second semester to start moving the needle even further towards zero? So you'll see on the screen, there are a number of action steps for the second semester. We want to talk with you a little bit more about some of those. As Mr. Simmons mentioned, at the heart of it all is relationships. We know when children have positive relationships with each other and with their teachers, things tend to go better in the classroom, as we talked about earlier, and student achievement goes up because they are in the classroom and not home. And this is a little impromptu, but about an hour before I arrived here at the briefing today, I was visiting with a principal, the principal of a Tanglewood Elementary. And yesterday, they spent their entire day focused on improving behavior, looking at behavioral interventions and things that we can do as a teaching team to improve behavior at the school. And the little poem on this reads, "Here is a key to unlock every child's heart. Once you have their heart, you can unlock their potential. Relationships are key," all in caps. "Thanks for loving our students." And there's a little love on the side here. So very timely for the presentation today, but wanted you to know that our schools are focused, like nobody's business, on improving behavior and supporting students in their classrooms. So we have more examples, as we talked about. One example that I want to share with you that's particularly exciting, and our schools, you know, there's so many schools we could brag on, we only have a few minutes, so we're going to cherry pick a little bit here, but at Paul Lawrence Dumber Middle School, they have a program called the Phoenix Program, which is a mediation and a mentor program. And students receive social skill instruction before they go back to class, before they are permitted to go back. So real focus on that. As you know, you visit schools, you see mentors galore. We have a variety of community members that come in and mentor, from the 100 Black Men at a number of our schools, FGCU comes in, we have Village of Astero mentors, Hoops on a Mission, I mean, the list goes on and on of these wonderful community organizations that come in, take our children under their wing, and make sure that they are being academically and behaviorally successful. We have things like shopping tickets at Fort Myers Middle Academy, where the community donates items to the store and children get to redeem tickets. So a variety of incentive programs. We have the Lunch Bunch at Benita, where you walk with the principal over your lunch time, and you get some time with him, some special one-on-one time where you just get to talk, how are you doing, how are things at home, just to provide that extra support because again, it goes back to relationship, doesn't it? So the principals are all in. We have a variety of breakfast clubs at our schools where the principals and other admin, as well as teachers, resource teachers, step up in support in terms of mentorships. We have programs like Young Gentlemen's Club and Leading Ladies at Manatee, Franklin Park, Tropic Isles, and Orange Wood. So again, you're out in the schools, you see it, we just need to brag on our schools a little bit, they're doing wonderful work in this area. And so now we'll switch over to the Cs, which is Classroom Success. And we broke this item out into a variety of goals in alignment with our Vision 2020 goals and our Department Improvement Goals. First, let's take a look at ELA proficiency, and we don't want to just be, you know, in the top tier, we want to be the highest of the Big Ten districts. And so when you take a look at this chart right here, you'll see the data broken down in a couple of ways. One is if you look, for example, in elementary, you'll see Quarter One to Quarter Two last year compared to Quarter One and Quarter Two this year. So we look at the data and we see, okay, we're moving forward in a positive direction. We also encourage you to look at it from Quarter Two last year to Quarter Two this year. So for example, in elementary, 49% of the students were proficient last year at the end of Quarter Two, this year we have 51%. So are we satisfied with 51% of our students being proficient? Absolutely positively not. At the end of this presentation, this portion of the presentation, we'll share with you some of our action steps, things we're putting into play for the second semester. Next slide. So we're going to do the same thing in math, let's take a look at math. So we want to look at Quarter One to Quarter Two, and once again, we see a couple of areas where we're moving forward and a couple of areas where we have opportunity when it comes to mathematics. So we want to look at this again in two ways, Quarter One to Quarter Two last year compared to Quarter Two, or Quarter One to Quarter Two this year. We also want to look at where we were Quarter Two at last year, and then the end of where we stand this year. And again, looking at elementary, while we last year had 51% to 54% from Quarter One to Quarter Two, this year we have 58% to 59%. So we are moving the needle in the right direction. Again, all, you know who we are, we're not satisfied until we get to that 100%. We want all of our children proficient. If you do look at last year in elementary, we were at 54% at the end of Quarter Two, now we're at 59% proficient. So we are making some moves in that area. Again, we acknowledge there's work to be done here, and we're going to share those strategies with you in a few moments. Okay? And then overall, we want to talk with you about our ranking as it pertains to our Quarter One and Quarter Two data. This data, we've rolled up all of our students in grades three through 10, so this is every child, whether they're in grade three, four, or five, all the way to grade 10. And we can see in U.S. history and in biology, there are significant gains when comparing this year to last year. An uptick of five percentage points in U.S. history and an uptick of four points in biology. But again, we have work to do because there are areas of concern, and we recognize that.
All right, I want to talk a little bit about our college and career acceleration component. This is very exciting. We have gained six points over where we were last year, and the district has gone from 55 to 61. Some positive things are that, you know, Riverdale gained 10 points and is our highest school when it comes to college and career. And Island Coast gained 22 points in one year, so that's amazing. To put this into students, how many does that six points mean? This means that for the six points, 396 more students in our district who passed an AP exam, ACE exam, IB exam, or earned industry certification over where we were last year. So we picked up almost 400 additional students. So that's a great job when it comes to college and career.
And I'm excited to share with you some notable schools. These schools have increased this many points over this time last year. So this is Quarter Two this year compared to Quarter Two last year. You can see up there at the top is Tropic Isles, they are up 72 points from this time last year, and so on and so forth down the list there. But some of the things that we did, we had a few key leadership changes in these schools. And also, when the, when these principals came into their data chats in January, we asked them, what are you doing? Let us learn from you. What is the key that is making the difference this year? And they all said relationships is one, culture relationships. The other was their intentional planning through the PLC process and giving teachers time to plan for the individualized instruction. And so those were the two takeaways, relationships and the PLC time. The next slide that I want to share with you is the decrease in the achievement gaps in ELA between the student groups. And so for example, if you look at last year, the black and white students at this time, we had a 30% achievement gap. This year, we have decreased that gap by 28%, I'm sorry, by 2%. So it's gone from 30 to 28%, okay? And you can read the rest of the graph there with the other subgroups. But some of the things that we attribute this decrease in the achievement gap for ELA and math, and I'll show you math in just a minute, is the work on the ABCs, so attendance and behavior, making sure the students are at school, and making sure that we are teaching them how to behave if we need to, or helping the parents and partnering with parents to increase behavior so that we can teach them. And really individualizing that approach. So as the other team talked about, and then Mr. Simmons talked about, each team has, each school has an intervention team. And so we, they take a list of the students who are chronically absent and contact the parents. We even have Jessica Duncan and some of her team, on the weekends, they're going to the houses and knocking on doors and saying, we love your family, we want you to be at school, make sure your child is at school. And they're giving them like a little treat or something. And then the coffee coupon is another example. And really, when the home visits are showing us that there are some basic needs that may need to be met, until those are met, whatever we teach them, they're not going to learn. So we have to find ways. And the attendance data and the behavior data is usually that tip of the iceberg. We know there's an underlying problem, and we just have to keep digging and digging until we find it, which is usually connected to a basic need that's not being met. And then we go after it, that's why we have washers and dryers in the schools and so on and so forth. Something, and this is the math data, so we are also decreasing the achievement gap in math. This is, this is super exciting because we're headed in the right direction. One of the things that I wanted to point out, and it was mentioned in a previous presentation today, is in 1718, there were over 8,000 ELL students. 8,000, that was two years ago. Last year, we went to 10,500, and then this year, we're at 13,191. So in the period of two years, we've, three years, we've increased almost 5,000 ELL students. And so some of the strategies and action steps that Dr. Carlin will explain next include that population. PSYOP training, Evelyn Rivera and her team have really increased the PSYOP training, going to our teachers, it's strategies for ELL, instructional strategies for ELL students, but they're really good for all students. So there was a question before about our increase in ESOL teachers. All of our teachers need to be trained in strategies to teach ELL students because we, they all have them. I mean, it's a big part of our population.
All right. So you might be asking, what are our next steps? There's some challenges here. We're going to be totally honest with you. When we look at our data, you just heard Ms. Fletcher speak to you about the increase in students that are coming to us with English as a second language. We know mental health is an issue, we acknowledged that in the previous presentation. There are a variety of issues. We make no excuses. We're going to adjust and flex our strategies to meet the needs of all of our students, and we're committed to that. So let's talk about a couple of things. One, we look at our tiered school support. Gone are the days where we say, okay, everybody's on the same playing field and we're going to send the same level of support out there. Those days are gone. We look at the school's data, we look at academics, we look at behavior, we look at attendance, and we say, okay, what do we need to do? Like you heard in the previous presentation, a walking bus. That is not happening at every school, but based on data, we're flexing our strategies like the walking bus at one of our highest need schools. So we're committed to doing that. When we look at content support, we see that some schools continue to struggle in the area of English language acquisition. We're going to continue to tier the folks that go out to that school, for example, Ms. Rivera and team, they will get a higher level of support from our ELL experts. When it comes to reading, for example, more reading time, more experts on the field, out in the field, helping teachers to be able to acquire the skills that they need to effectively teach reading to a wide variety of our students. We also talk about things like curriculum briefs. We are finding with the increased number of career changers, not everybody went to a College of Education and learned pedagogy, particularly strategies that are going to be effective with all of our students. So again, we are sending out briefs on how to do that, and that could be as simple as a video that shows... And that could be as simple as a video that shows a particular strategy and how to effectively deliver that. It could be a content area. We find some of our elementary teachers are more generalists. They may not have science in their background. And so we are sending out videos. We are sending out real-time support on the ground to help with planning for science so that it can be effectively instructed. So those are some of the things that we're putting into play. You know about our e-learning walks. We talked with you earlier this fall about those, getting folks into the schools. I'm really excited about the work that Curriculum and Instruction is doing relative to developing leadership capacity. And I want to talk with you about that for just a moment. It's actually Strategies Four and Five. When I was an assistant principal at an elementary school, I used to come to meetings, but they were not always focused on teaching and learning. It's hard to say that out loud. That was a number of years ago, but they were not. We focused on buses. We looked, learned discipline. We learned how to take care of the building. We learned HR. But we did not tend to learn a lot about curriculum instruction. And my hat's off to Bethany Quisenberry and her team, Dr. Spiro and his vision, for bringing our assistant principals at the elementary level down to the district office. And we are teaching things like standards-based instruction, how to look at data and individualize instruction based on the needs of our students. So that's really exciting. Leading and learning, I want to talk about that for just a moment. So we now, we know more than ever, we have teachers that are coming to the career and they don't have backgrounds in teaching. So we have teachers that are coming here as representatives of their school to learn about ELA at kindergarten, fourth grade, fifth grade, second grade, math, science. And then they go back to their school and they teach. So it's building their capacity, but then also going back and sharing the latest strategy. So I just want you to know that there is a lot happening in this regard and we are really proud of our curriculum department because they are just a small group. They're a small army. But they can't go out and effectively serve every single teacher in every classroom. So we're building their capacity to be able to do that.
And that's happening in pre-K through twelve.
Yes, across the board. Dr. Atkins mentioned our quarterly data chats and that is the opportunity for principals to come down and meet with Dr. Spiro, all of us as executive directors and our director of curriculum and instruction for that particular level. When they come in, they share their data, just like we shared with you. They share their school-level data. And then they have the opportunity to say, as the instructional leader in this building, here's what I need. I need assistance. I've got a number of new teachers and I need support for them. Our ELA scores are low. Our gains are down. We need some support from curriculum and instruction in that area. Whatever their need is, our job is to connect their need with the resource. And so that's what we do in those data chats. You know about our principal leads. They are our principal superstars. They have a proven track record of success. And so now they go out and they mentor other principals. And that's where we're starting to see some traction. We also, I mentioned the APC monthly meetings. And then something else that we do is provide them, and I want to thank Candace Alavado and Ryan in our Accountability Department, they have put together something called an anti-up sheet, a data sheet. So what that says to me is, I have a goal as a principal at my school of, I'm going to make it up, eighty-five percent proficient for this year in ELA. Right now, I have seventy-six percent proficient. I want to get to eighty-five. How many students is that by grade level? So how many in third? How many in fourth? How many in fifth? And then I sit with our teachers and we talk about what's it going to take to get that percentage of students up to our school goal. And we actually go student by student and we say, what is the strategy? Is that a child that we know we can get to proficiency? If we don't have enough students, how do we get more? What is it you need from me as the principal? And then when the principal comes to the data chat, they convey that to us. And if there's something we can do to help and support, we're there every day of the week to provide that for them. So those are some of our strategies. Again, a real focus on leadership, not only at the administrative level, but developing that leadership at the teacher level. Because quite frankly, that's where the rubber hits the road. That's where the good stuff happens in the classroom every single day. So with that, we have questions or comments? We'll be happy to entertain those.
Ms. Morgan, please. So it's, it's, it's great to see that there are areas where we're doing really well. But honestly, when I look at the data and I listen to this presentation, I have great concerns. I'm wondering if the strategic plan we put in place and we continue to modify is not, that the population that we have is no longer the same population that we created that strategic plan for. I'm wondering if we are, if we need to really look at the kids who are not making it and responding to them in a transformative way. You talked about people who are doing, it's schools that are doing well. Did any schools drop points? How many schools dropped points? You know, we're not talking about where we're not, it's good to see that we are being successful and people work so hard in this district. At every level, people work hard. It is frustrating to sit here and feel that what we're seeing doesn't reflect the amount of work that's being put into these kids. And that means that I'm concerned that we're just, we're missing the point somewhere. And I just would like to hear how the rest of you responded to this data. And I'd like to hear your thoughts, Dr. Atkins.
Well, let me give you one of the initial pieces that I've been the most concerned watching, the efforts of our team over not just this year, but over several years. You know, I've seen our team make tremendous progress. If you look at our data, just about by every measure, we have made improvements over the last four years. Substantial in many areas. However, I've also watched some other districts do that as well. And I know that this group has focused like I've never seen before in, with previous administrations. So we want to look at that. The number one thing I believe right now is limiting us is the amount of time that our teachers are standing in front of students. So instructional time. If you look at some of our scheduling and you compare it to our comparable districts across, you know, across Florida, some of the ones that have been very successful, just about all of them, actually at the high school level, you see more time. So if you're in an algebra class, that was something that was put up here as an area of concern. They're spending more time, students in Miami Dade, taking algebra, minutes per, you know, semester, minutes per year than what you're going to see here in Lee County. So the team has identified that as an issue. And that is why the academic services team, along with, you know, the work in operations, is working on a plan to address that for the following year. Because I think that's going to be one of the things that's going to be a major step that I think is going to, that's, that's going to probably give you a huge bump when we're able to implement that. The second thing, I think, is that we have experienced a very unusual surge in ELL in terms of that population that is unprecedented. You know, we are, if you look at the data in the last five years, the fastest-growing school district in the state of Florida with this population. And the difficulty here for our unique, and I believe it's a unique challenge that you don't see in, in most other school districts, that is that, that we are less diverse as you get older in Lee County. So that means you have less of a workforce available. Fortunately, on the other side of this, what I, what we are seeing is we are seeing more bilingual teachers gradually matriculating into the workforce. You go out to Lee High Senior High School and you look at the Teaching Academy and you've got many kids there that are bilingual and some of the kids there that are trilingual that we hope to recruit into our pathway. When you look at the trajectory of other districts, like Miami Dade, went through something similar a number of years ago, I think, you know, more than two decades ago. And as that workforce has, has matured, you've seen them also enter the workforce. And I think they're better equipped to, to work with those students. So when you look at, I know, you know, recruitment, this is something that Angela, Dr. Pruitt's team and Dr. Spiro, you know, they meet, I think, every Monday morning. And these are some of the things that they're focused on doing is try to get more of those skill-capable teachers into the workforce to help with this substantial problem. So those are two of the things that I think are contributing. There are others, but those are two of the major ones. And I think, again, the time thing is going to give us a major advantage. Because right now, if you look at the, actually Clayton, if you could just maybe, I know you probably know this off the top of head, not to put you on the spot, but tell them about the instructional time at the high school level.
Well, they, of the Big Ten districts and our neighbors to the north and the south, every single one of them, all of them, have a seven-hour student day. Except for one, which is Collier County, they have a six-hour and fifty-five-minute student day. So, you know, right out of the gate, every day, our students are starting thirty minutes behind. And that adds up as you go through. And it's not just at the, at the high school level, middle school, Ms. Mayor's doing some data on that and we're seeing the same thing in middle school. So when you add up all that time, it's a considerable loss of time. You know, so that is not fair to our students or our teachers who are, who are put on an unfair, you know, playing field with, it's amazing that we're continuing to make, keep pace. But, you know, we're not gaining on anybody. But if, like Dr. Atkins said, if we were able to get that time and be on an equal playing field with the districts, then I guarantee you with the, with the quality of our teachers and our staff, that we would surpass them or we would start to close the gap. But that time, you can overcome the time. When you take thirty minutes a day and add it up, that's ninety hours, you know, that's, or that's ninety hours a year. That's a lot of instruction time.
And despite that, we've made gains on some of those, those larger districts. So we've been able to close the gap in some areas or at least maintain it in others while still making, you know, improvement academically. So I think if, if we're able to add that time, that will make a difference. Our high school principals and, and our academic services team has already been to work on this problem. Tomorrow in chief meeting, I'm, I'm going to hear some of the results of that work. I know that after the principals' meeting, you know, they continue to finalize that. In addition to that, I met with Dr. Savage today and Roger Lloyd, our director of transportation. And that team has already got proposals that will help address the transportation component so that we can add this time for next year and, and be able to accomplish that. He knows my number one is on-time arrival. So he's working on that plan. But I, I'll be honest, I was pretty impressed with the work that I saw out of operations today that is aligned with what academic services has been doing.
So let me just follow up with one, one question. So we don't have as much time. Are we using the time we have as effectively as we could be? So, I mean, I think, and forgive me because I am really twentieth century. I mean, I went to school when I had three and four periods a day. So totally different educational experience. But if we're, you know, giving kids, you know, twenty minutes a day or thirty minutes a day or forty minutes a day, is that every day, is that as effective as giving them fifty or sixty minutes of really intense time? So I guess my question is, we're not going to be able to tackle the additional time right now. I mean, we just can't change it right now. Is there something we can do about the way we use time? Let me make one other comment. Some kids need a lot of time and some kids need very little time. And how do we use teacher, teacher time is, is the, is the real, is the primary economic resource. And we're not using it effectively because we're not dedicating teachers, teacher time to the students who need teacher time. Everybody's getting teacher time. So, and I'm trying really hard not to be negative about this because I really do believe that you all are doing great work. I really do. You have put together a plan and you have worked diligently on that plan. And there's no question there are payoffs. But if we, we're stuck in a place that nobody else is in and we can't compete against them on their playing field, how do we figure out a way?
So two things.
Okay.
First of all, we can address the student time now. We can do that without changing the teacher time. Again, that's why I made the effort yesterday during the workshop to differentiate between the two. You can, there's the added eight-hour day for teachers. But in the meantime, at the, at the secondary level, we can certainly put more time in the student day. So you can add thirty minutes in the student day at high school, I believe, at high school definitely. And then I believe you can put at least an additional fifteen at the middle school level. And that's what the teams are working on right now. That's the first thing.
Thank you. I missed that.
The second thing that I think is, is important is that I do believe that we can become more efficient with the use of that time. And, and what you have, and that's, again, the discussion that's going on right now among our, our academic services team and our school leaders is that if you look at like middle school, they've seen some success at the middle school level because what they've done at many of the most successful ones is they're double-blocking the academics. So despite having a block schedule, they're going to see in ELA mathematics every single day. So you've seen some tremendous results there and they're working with that team to standardize that across the, the curriculum, giving them, I know, a little flexibility, but still overall, making sure we are consistent district-wide because we're being successful at schools A, B, and C. The innovators that figured this out a while ago, now we're seeing the rest of them come along and doing that double-blocking. Because as a former science teacher, you got to see, they got to see that mathematics. They got to see you every day. That's not happened at the high school level to that degree. And then if you take that block schedule and you're in an algebra class and then you throw in a professional services day or something, you may not see that group of students but one time in that, in that week. And so that creates problems. So how can we work on the schedule to take out some of that stuff and make sure that they're spending more time academically? I know I said two, but three. I do, I truly believe that we're, we can make gains by making sure that, that by the senior year, we're not just loading up with junk in the last schedule. And what I say by junk, they've gotten, they've gotten, okay, I've got all of my stuff done. And so I, I have this, you know, so I'm taking electives. This is something I feel pretty passionately about. And I think this, this year, they're really addressing that so that we have academics infused through all of those four years, including that, including that last year. So all of that work is being done. So if you look at what we're looking at this year and then thinking about how, what's going to change for next year, those are things that we're, we will put into place that I think will make a bigger impact.
Thank you. Sorry for all the time.
No, it's, look, I, you guys don't see this side of it, but they know that when I look at the data, you know, I, I come in expecting bigger jumps because I see how people are working. And then you get frustrated with, well, we have some incremental ones here and that's great. And we're increasing our points and everything, our graduation rate. But we, I wanted to see, I was hoping to see bigger moves. So this year is like, why, why is that time? It's a, and, you know, that was something the school district did, Clayton, mid, mid-two thousands or...
I think that was done back when they originally went to school choice, that they decreased the student day because of the busing and it was too hard to get the kids where they needed to go.
There is some really innovative things going on in transportation that they'll bring to you as a result of Green Belt Project and addressing some of our outlying routes with some better, I think, probably smaller, more flexible transportation options that will help us with workforce, will help us because you don't have the same requirements and will, on-time arrival and will allow us to be able to accomplish the goals of increasing the student day while maintaining, you know, that pretty high number for on-time arrival.
Okay, I had a different question, but I feel compelled to answer some of what has just been brought up here. Okay, so I, I feel like some-
just been brought up here. Okay, so I feel like some of what Dr. Atkins just said is slightly different from what we were talking about at the workshop yesterday. So, in other words, and you mentioned high school, Dr. Atkins, so I know there's, I think if I remember correctly, and hasn't changed, like a 15 minute teacher arrival before the first bell. And then after school, it's longer because those kids end at 1:35. And I think, is it 2:15 now for teachers?
2:20.
2:20. Okay, so, okay, so we can, we can do what you, what you said. We can increase student contact time, which I think is good because an 84 minute block period really isn't enough time, and especially if you're, if you have a split midday, you know, with class, lunch, class, you're really losing time and first period, the kids that wander in late, that, that sort of thing. But when we do that, we are losing teacher time after school to meet collaboratively with their subject area. And I think that's really important. And frankly, and I've mentioned this over and over again, it's something that I noticed almost 15 years ago when I came here from my teaching in Texas. I don't think, and this was my question, what measures are we implementing to develop teacher curriculum leadership? And I don't want to hear about the peer collaborative teachers. I want to know the department chairs and maybe grade level leads. What are we doing really to give them, to empower them? My feeling is, what I saw at Astero, and I was very happy at Astero, don't get me wrong, but what I saw was that we weren't truly valuing the expertise, and I've heard this from other people, other grade levels, we don't value that expertise. We take and we pluck out a few people to be peer collaborative. And yes, many of them are our better teachers, but let's be real, the people that the principals favor, and that's not just here, it's throughout any school I've ever been in. There are ones that are the anointed ones, if we're going to talk for real. They're the ones that are principal favorites. They're the ones. And often, it's the people that are the older ones that aren't getting, it's, we love to bring up the young, the youngsters. And it's because the youngsters are more, again, I'm just going to be real and put it out there, more malleable. They're more, they're less outspoken than some of the older teachers. I see that as a huge waste, that we are wasting valuable, valuable talent. And some of those teachers, some of those teachers are the ones that are leaving. And that's a really sad thing. We need to recruit. But I think, in a way, it's even more important to retain, retain those teachers. And what we talked about yesterday with, you know, the idea of where the money is going to come from for raises, and who are the teachers that are going to not profit from this, most likely, are the ones on the upper levels. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to just give a speech.
So, Ms. Vaughn, what is, what is the question that you have?
The question is, I'll get back to it, what are the measures that are implemented, that we are implementing now to develop teacher curriculum leadership, not the peer collaborative teachers, but the ones that are already there?
And that's a fair question. So I think what you see most schools doing now, not all schools, because I know we're looking at systemic approaches, but most schools now have instructional leadership teams that help drive the work inside of their building. Outside of that, most schools take their teachers and open up classrooms and do instructional rounds where they will get an opportunity, as teachers in the school, no matter where they are, have a chance to walk with administrators, other teacher leaders, to talk about instruction, to talk about pedagogy, to talk about systems as an ongoing method inside of a building to build a toolkit of every teacher, no matter where they are. And that's applicable to all teachers. So that culture of helping build teachers' toolkits, that is, that is something that is permeating throughout the district, not at all schools at this point, but certainly something that is building. The other thing I want to talk to you about, we talked about teacher time after school. We are going to be working with our assistant principals for curriculum on making sure that we have common planning when we're building those master schedules, where that would help alleviate some of those concerns. That way, they can be planning during the day, and teachers can continue on with those PLCs. And yes, that's a challenge when building a master schedule, for those of you that have done that. But if you're able to master that and do that, that is a great use of time during the day. Does that answer your question a little bit?
It answers my question. It doesn't answer my concern, which is, any way you slice it in high school, and I don't know how it's going to shake out, and high school's my realm of expertise, any way you slice it, those teachers are going to lose a lot of their own individual time because they can, they can do common planning, even some common lesson plannings, but we have dozens of teachers with standalone classes. My last year of teaching, I taught three preps, only one other people taught. I was standalone in two of them. The contacting of parents, the, just decompressing, just-
No, I understand-
The way you slice it, we're going to lose it. And I'm just going to get back to, we want to keep those people, they need more money. And I think the other issue is, in loss of time, is the devolving behavioral, behavior of students. And I've heard it from teacher friends of mine at Astero, because that's where I taught for eight years, that some of them are just throwing up their hands with the numbers of tardies. I think I heard 14,000 as a number thrown out there, and various other and sundry things that are happening. And yeah, if kids are tardy, we're losing that time, too.
Agreed.
So we got to get a handle on some of this, the behavior and how it's devolved over the years because we have significant loss of time that way.
Thank you.
Ms. Kittens?
My main thing, yeah.
Questions, please.
Well, I do have a comment based on what the superintendent had mentioned before. And we talk about block schedule and having, you know, taught that. I often wondered if a student is having trouble with math, putting them in there for a longer period of time as opposed to putting them in every day makes a difference because the students will, you know, they won't even bring the book for the next day. So they've, they've got 24 hours that they just totally forget about what they're deficient in, and then you're trying to bring them up again. So that was a reality that was an issue.
I know they've looked at different scheduling changes. I mean, whether it's block or back to a period, I mean, that's, you know, I haven't gotten the final recommendation yet, but all that's being looked at. In my, and again, this is just my personal opinion, which I think I've shared with you before, you know, always believed, particularly with an academic course, and mathematics is a great example, you know, that, that seeing that child every day makes a difference.
Tremendous difference, yeah.
Particularly if you're talking about at-risk student.
Right. The second, I agree with what Ms. Vaughn was saying. All I hear when I'm talking to teachers is the discipline issues. And I can imagine if you say, we're going to extend your day and you're going to be with them longer, they're going to freak out because the, and I know we're working on it, but the discipline issue is something we have to do. And then lastly, you were talking about comparing other districts to what we're doing and their success. And I know we talked about it in relationship to the time with students. Have we really laid out comparisons to other things as well?
Yes. Yeah, they have looked at the curriculum, they've looked at course progression, they've looked at schedules, they've looked at all of those factors. Yes, ma'am.
And one question, and you don't have to answer it now, is I, I hear a lot from parents about Chromebooks and the computers, and there is a concern about that. So you don't have to answer now, but that may, in the parent's mind, that is an issue as well. I mean, are we turning over what should be face-to-face, me talking to you, to you do it on the computer? So I'm just putting that out there.
Well, and I still feel, you know, deserves a response. I will think, I do think that one of the things that our Chromebooks allow us to do, I know you visit classrooms, all of board members visit classrooms, and you watch some of those differentiated models where they do small group instruction. One of the things, particularly if you've got a heterogeneous group, that you can do more effectively, I think you can group within that classroom, that teacher can sit down with a small group of kids and really understand where each one of his or her students is with a particular standard because of working with that small group, while this other group of kids is pretty much engaged in the activity they're supposed to be working on in I-ready, you know. And then, you know, that's one of the things that you see, walk, you know, you walk around the different stations when I go visit a classroom and see the engagement of the kids. And, you know, I've been pretty impressed with the way our teachers are conducting themselves as it relates to, you know, the pedagogy, the instructional technique, the grouping that they do within. You take a heterogeneously grouped classroom, but yet then they can homogeneously group to address certain skills, and then they can move back and forth. This kid has really made some progress, will slide up into this group. So that's one of the advantages. And I think moving forward, you know, Chromebooks and similar technology allow us to differentiate this instruction more so, you know, more than we've ever been able to do in the history of education. And so that's, there are some, certainly some advantages there.
Oh, no, and I totally agree. I mean, trust me, I've been in a, you know, fourth grade classroom teaching, and if they didn't, if they weren't doing something over here, it would be chaos. So I totally understand that, but I'm wondering, how deeply have we looked into the true benefits for all levels and all students? I mean, it is wonderful for that scenario. Are we giving it more, thinking that the kids are going to go home and do their homework on it, and therefore, we, you know, they're going to catch up with this? And I don't know the answer to that. So, I agree with you, I'm just saying, if we dig deeper into actually what's happening with them. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Well, this parent loves the Chromebooks, so I have to say that I've seen the differentiation of instruction be, play out really, really well in my house. And I don't hear complaints from parents about Chromebooks at all. So I don't, we're obviously talking to different parent groups. Ms. Morgan, you asked what my reaction was to the data that was presented to us today, so I'm getting back to you. And more efficient use of time, to a certain extent, is impossible because of mission creep. I've talked about that from this table before. And I forget who it was, I think it was Dr. Quisenberry, who said, kids come in, they don't know how to learn, they don't know how to do math, we teach them. They know how to read, we teach them. They don't know how to behave, we teach them. Were we teaching kids how to behave 20, 30 years ago? No. But, but that's an additional thing that's taking away from instruction time. And I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing it. We have to do it. If kids are going to be successful, we have to teach them these things. You know, we have washers and dryers in schools. Did we have washers and dryers in schools 30 years ago? Is that something that, you know, our staff in schools was focused on doing? I think some of this comes down to mission creep. And my last comment is this, you know, I, I look at that yellow sheet out there about the superintendent's job and our, or I think the board is on the left and the superintendent is on the right. And the way I look at it is this, we kind of tell you what your job is, and you figure out how to do the job, right? And so you come to us today with ideas. And, and if I were you, my head would be popping off because the ideas that you brought to me were good. And, and all I heard was criticism of those ideas. So I'm, I just, I've said this to you before, I don't think you can win for losing, so.
Well, I believe in, I believe in the work and believe in what we're doing. You know, I think that one of the things that, that I feel good about, honestly, coming away from some of the work we've done recently, is that some of the concerns that I raised early on, you know, like when Dr. Spiro took his position, and, and, you know, Clayton and Denise came into their positions, you know, they're addressing. And, you know, they've, they've studied the problem because before it showed up in this data, I'm looking at trend data and where I want to be as a school district versus where we are. And we're in a good spot. I mean, I mean, in terms of, of the tremendous progress we have made, given the challenges that we have in this district. That's the one thing I, that I just keep going back to, is you've got, you know, more ELL students, more poverty, you've got, you just added 800 students that were not here before winter break. Now you've got 800 more students that are out there that are, teachers are, are taken care of. But they've been doing a great job. But I think we can do a better job, and they have studied the problem and have brought real solutions forward and have been working collaboratively with our stakeholders to implement these before we did a mid-year report. And then you've got transportation working on it from that, you know, that side of it. Then you've got, you know, business services working on the compensation and the money portion of it. So all of that works together. So I understand, but, you know, the, for me, you know, we, we do have solutions. If I were sitting here without them and I started getting the tough questions, then that would be something to be concerned about. And I also would be concerned if I wasn't, if we weren't showing you the data, good and bad and indifferent. So it is, it is what it is, but I feel pretty confident about the direction that we're headed and looking forward to, to implementing some strategies for next year.
Ms. Jivinelli, do you have anything to say?
I do have a little bit. So, like, today, everybody's been talking about relationships, and I think that is key to everything, honestly. And so I'm excited about hearing that, that conversation because I think it starts at the top, including the superintendent, our board, our relationships that we have with everyone in the community, and then right down to the leadership, from the principals to the APs, to their, the staff, to their, the students, to their parents, reaching out. And it's, it's a, it's a hard job. I mean, building those relationships are really difficult. You have to have the right people in place to be able to, to be able to have that relationship status with everyone in the community. So I think that's really important. I think that that is really hitting on a lot. I think in making sure that we have the right people in the right seats. And I love what you're, you're talking about and doing. I mean, honestly, to have change is hard, but we need to acknowledge our deficiencies and make those changes. If we, otherwise, we're just going to stay the way we've been. And we, we have goals that we've set, and in order to achieve it, it has to have some change. So whatever that looks like, I'm excited to see how that plays out. So I, I thank everybody because I know everyone is working very hard. But we just want to make sure that maybe the right person's in the right seat. And sometimes it might be a little changing around because they might do a little bit better over here. So, and I love all the new changes in the, in the higher, higher up, because I see that there is change happening with Dr. Spiro. So I just want to, you know, I get it. So thank you.
So if you don't mind, because you just said that, let me share something that, obviously, I don't know how I'm going to share this with the board, but it just popped up. It was a school principal. And this was after the principals' meeting. He sent this on a, on a Saturday. "Good afternoon. I was just sitting here thinking, in the four years since I've been part of the high school principals' group, I've never seen morale so high. This has everything to do with you two," meaning Clayton Simmons and Jeff Spiro, "thanks for all you do to make us feel supported."
That's really important. I completely agree. So keep your relationships going. So keep your relationships going. Thank you. That's it.
And I will ditto what you just said because I definitely believe in relationships, and that's where it all begins at. And Dr. Carlin, also, you know, I love the fact that you said, "We know that this is where we have to go and we are not going to stop." So thank you. Thank all of you for what you do, really appreciate it. And I think, I think that's it, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Nothing for Human Resources Information System Public Comments. Is there anyone here?
School, I have no blue cards, but I'll read it just so it opens up for the record.
Yeah, we're, there's no one here, so.
And we can close it.
Okay.
Open and close.
Yeah.
So Board Member Comments. Melissa, I'm going to start, oh, Ms. Javonelli.
I'm gonna, I have none.
Ms. Patrica.
Kind of had mine already, so.
In keeping with our protocol, I'm sorry, I am going to give my board member comments now instead of tonight because that's what our protocols call for, and I do have several items. You all know that I attended FHSAA Board Meeting yesterday and Sunday. I will be calling in to our Monday meetings when I am up in Gainesville for FHSAA, so please get used to that. Dr. Atkins, did you know that Superintendent Bass is moving?
Yes, I did.
So that was, so Superintendent Bass over in Glades accepted a position as Deputy Superintendent in Indian River, and I think he's been a good resource to us. I think we've worked well on several initiatives, so a little sad to see him move a little further away, but still good to have.
Sad for me as well. It's a good group down here, and it's very collaborative.
And I think that whatever new things he learns over there, we can continue to take advantage of that relationship. But we are losing him from the board. So a couple really cool things happened. We talked about, and again, I've said this before, when I see Mr. LaRosa in Gainesville at those board meetings, it's a sense of pride because we are represented. And he reached out to me on an agenda item where we're likely in April going to make a policy change allowing for six quarters of football play in a week, as opposed to right now, we're limited to four. So why does that matter? When I was a freshman in high school, I played freshman basketball, and then I played freshman and JV basketball. I was allowed to play six quarters of basketball. And then same year, I played JV and varsity. So it allowed my coach to build a program. And we have additional issues. In Florida, football numbers are dwindling. So one of the board members gave the example, gave this example. In order to field a varsity football team, he had to bring a freshman up to varsity. The freshman wasn't good enough to play, but he had to be there in case somebody got injured. So freshman year, sophomore year, this kid sitting on the varsity roster, getting no playing time at all, and then junior year, he's thrown into a varsity game for the first time. So the potential for injury there is great, and again, it's going to allow coaches to really build programs in their schools, which is a good thing. I've toured several schools, I'm only going to hit the highlights. James Stevens International, I toured today, that school is awesome. I was, I was just stunned by the physical facility. And also, as Mr. Rickembacher was talking about where the pre-K is going to go, I totally obviously could see it because I was just there and they were showing me exactly where it was going to be. Relationships, 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 that's what it's all about for Ms. Stedman. I toured Tanglewood Elementary, which Dr. Carlin is gone, but that place was awesome. That, the culture in that school was beyond what I see in most schools. And Ms. Buckley out there, everywhere we went, kids were hugging her. Everywhere we went, staff was interacting with her. And I don't get that in every school. So really, really impressed with what's going on out there. And as I'm going out to more schools, I'm hearing really positive feedback about Dr. Carlin. She's relatively new to the mix, and the sense is that she's really there to support and she's really there to make sure that the schools are getting what they need. A sterile high school basketball game was the best thing ever. It started at 1:00 in the afternoon on Friday. So for 35 minutes, the entire student body was in the gym. I feel bad, not so bad for LaBelle, who we played. If it was another Lee County school, I would have felt badly for them, but it was a Lee County school, so yay. So these kids, who typically have maybe 50 people, including their cheerleaders, watching them play, had the entire student body. So, you know, the starting lineup is called, and the kids run out in the middle, and they get the attention from the entire student body. And then the first play of the game, you know, the kid threw up a brick because he was nervous, but when they, when they settled into the game, it was just such a phenomenal experience for those kids. And I understand that, that Mr. Ammubeal had to take six minutes of instruction time away from each of the teachers, and there was some pushback from the teachers, but the teachers played along as long as they don't do it too often. I thought it was a really good balance in terms of building school spirit. One of the best things I've been to, for sure. That was awesome. Also, we went to a track meet the next day, I ran into Ms. Morgan at that track meet. I thought that that was fantastic. Unfortunately, we had to leave early. Several of the board members went to the Delta's Founder's Day Luncheon, and I have to tell you, I walked into that room and what I was struck by was the beauty of the room. And I don't mean the physical structure, I mean the women who were in that room. It was incredibly moving to me to understand the history of that sorority and what they've done to, you know, some people tell me that I, as a woman in the year 2020, live in the shadow of the women who came before me because they blazed trails. I like to think that I live in the bright light that they shone upon my future, and I feel like that was what we saw in that room that day. Also, I walked in a little bit late, so I didn't sit with my colleagues, I sat with the Delta Deers. Do you know what they are? The Delta Deers are like the elder members, and they are in a position of like, I don't know, significance? They sit right next to the buffet, first of all, they get to go through the buffet first. So I got to go through the buffet first, and they all made me go before them. And because they're near the buffet, everybody that goes through the buffet stops and talks to them. So I got to meet a ton of people, they were incredible hostesses, and I, it was just an event like, really like none I've ever been to before. I only have three more things. Dunbar Business Advisory Committee Meeting, this is where the business people come in, and basically the programs and the clubs pitch the business people and say, "Hey, we need money." And the kids that they bring in each week just make you want to open your wallet so wide because you don't expect this level of expertise from these kids. One kid won both Inventors Fair and Science Fair for his invention of a doorstop that produces energy. And somebody said, "Well, you know, have you thought about other uses for this?" And he was like, "Yes, well, it's low voltage, so it would illuminate an exit sign or a security system or something else." Like everything, these professional people asked with regard to the engineering, the electricity and all that, he knew the correct answer. It was really impressive, the kid was, the kid was awesome. Two more things, rapid training, do you know what rapid training is? I went to rapid training through the Sheriff's Youth Activities League, and it is basically self-defense training, and it's really geared toward young girls. I obviously don't fit that category, but he, he adapted it for older people, but typically it's about high school kids. So I'd like us to look at empowering our girls by providing opportunities for them to get this training in our schools. I walk, I walk out into the world completely different than I did before I went into that training. Officer Grif gives the training. If you haven't met Officer Grif, you got to meet him. He is hardcore, awesome, very, very engaging training, and I just, I don't think anybody could mess with me now that I have that training, so. And finally, L, I don't know what L stands for out at Eastlake County High School, but it is a group of women, young girls, I'm sorry, who are in a class to learn various soft skills, I think is the way I would put it. And they held a Shark Tank event where each of them put together a project, a fundraising project, and I was a judge, Ms. Gittens was a judge, Dr. Decimore, the principal, the assistant principal, and the principal at Lehigh Middle were the judges. And these girls, I was told that they were crazy nervous to come in front of us and give their presentations, but I got no sense of nerves when those girls were in front of us. Every single one of them was confident and well-informed and well-spoken and made eye contact, and I was blown away by, I was just completely blown away by the entire thing, so, so grateful to be included and ultimate, I mean, like, the winning team made, did exactly what you do on Shark Tank. They made a pin and they put it in a box for the judges, and each judge got their own sample. And it was just, it was really, really an awesome experience. And again, the relationship aspect of that organization was stressed through the presentations from the girls. The girls were talking about creating products that would engage the entire student body. It wasn't, it wasn't selfish, it was selfless. It was about creating a community at Eastlake County High School, and those are high school kids. So that again comes from the leadership of the school. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan.
Okay, two things. First of all, piggybacking on the Delta Lunch, which was an incredible event. The question, the comment was made, should we be letting our students know, our older students know that they can make money conducting the census? So I don't know if you've looked into that or not, but I wanted to throw that out. The only other comment I will make is that I am grateful for you, Dr. Atkins, I am grateful for the presentation we had today and the conversation. And I say, every time I'm out in the community, I have confidence in our strategic plan because there is quantitative evidence that we are moving. And we really need to tackle the beginning, which is the birth to pre-K, and we need to make certain these kids have a place to go. And I want everybody in the district to understand that. I do have that confidence, but I am, you know, that's, thank you. I am grateful for you and for the leadership. That's my comment.
Ms. Vaughn. Okay. I too enjoyed the Delta Event, and I'm, because we have a wider audience in the, in our next meeting, I have a lot of things for updates for board and the community at large around, about the census. The only thing I'm going to mention now is, mentioned during this meeting about, talked about the ELL population and all of that, and as I said, I'm on the, I'm the liaison to the Curriculum Advisory. And so one of the things that we've been talking about was the international centers that we have at South Fort Myers, Dunbar, and East, and Eastlake County. And since I'd never seen those, I had the opportunity to go out last week and a quick tour of both South and Dunbar. I basically knew those schools. But where I put my emphasis and really talked with each principal about were the international centers. And they are, they are full to the brim. You know, moving forward, we may have to have more of the international centers or expand them. But it was very, very interesting to actually get to observe a couple of the classes for more than just a walk in and a quick walk out. And one thing that I, that I said walking out of one of the, one of the classrooms is, "Oh, I forgot how physical this job is." I never taught that, that level, but I, you know, I've taught ELLs in reading classes, but what a teacher learns as part of the PSYOPs and other trainings is that you have to use your hands and very, very active. And, and so kudos especially to the teachers that do that all, all day. It's a real workout, but I was also very, very impressed at the engagement of those students. I was in the back of the room for quite a while and watching, and they were really, really wanting to learn English. And also something that I wasn't necessarily used to as a high school teacher, she would ask various things like, "Well, what is?" And it would be, you know, rather simple English word, but it was an important word, and you'd see like this, you'd see the hands just going up waving. So that, that was wonderful to see how engaged and, and just desirous of learning English these, remember, high school students are because they came to us late. So I'll talk about the census tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
A couple of things, as the liaison to the Insurance Task Force, I had to put on my armor the other day because it boiled down to, there were a lot of comments and questions from teachers and staff about the insurance, and we've discussed that. And someone from the Spalk mentioned that it comes down to asking employees if they want to raise in their salaries or they want the money to go to insurance. And that, I brought that up yesterday, that's always a question. And it boiled down to the fact of someone saying, "Well, the board has to fund more." And I specifically said that we have one pot of money, and it just, we have to divide it out here, there, and everywhere, so it will depend how we can divide that pot of money. And I think that's one of the things that, going to Tallahassee and talking with legislators and all, that reality that there is one pot of money. And we talk about the teachers' increase and increasing the teachers' salaries, but then you look at the budget item for Best and Brightest, and they take that and they put it over here, and all of it's just a moving target all the time. And I think, you know, being in this, you understand that. I also went to the Delta Event, it was excellent. The comments, I mean, the speaker was really, really good. Shark Tank, yes, I went to that as well, and that was, I've always wanted to do that. You know, you watch it on TV and we're a shark.
I always saw myself as like the Mr. Wonderful one, you know, the really mean one, but they told me, "If you're mean to my kids, I will kick you out."
I know, I know. We were threatened, we were threatened. But a lot of, lot of good things going on there. Since you're going to talk this evening about, overall about the census, I will, we'll, we'll do it together this evening. I do want to bring up the fact, and I mentioned this to Dr. Atkins, that we seem to be going to more and more and more meetings on the day that we have an action meeting at 6:00. And, you know, not so much, I think, for the board members, my concern is staff. The staff arrives, what, 8:00, 8:30 in the morning, they're here all day, and to sit in meetings all day up until 8:00 at night, it makes for a very long day. And I thought that we had discussed this as a team previously, that we did not want to put that kind of pressure on staff. I know that, you know, we have briefings and things that we have to do, but I am asking you on behalf of staff that we look at the fact that this is a long day. It's a long day for us, and we're not here for 8:30 in the morning. So, you know, it's like, one thing to have one hearing or briefing meeting, but when we are here all day long into the night, and we don't know how long the meeting is going to last at night, I am just asking the board to revisit this, to think about the scheduling, it makes for a very, very long day. And I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Oh, that's it? Okay. Well, it's been a busy two weeks for me. I have been going to so many different places, and I'm going back to the word relationship again. Being out there in the community and speaking to the residents who we run into at these activities, I also went to the Delta Event, and they noticed that we're coming, and that's what they, the more we're out there, the more I hear, this is really great that the school district is so involved and the school board members are out here and really being a part of the community, and we're, they're loving the fact that we're out there. I spent the whole weekend at Art Fest with our students, and they're just, and I have, later, I know there's some pictures that we had sent in, but these kids are just fabulous. I mean, I stood in the rain, it didn't matter because they were out there, I was going to be out there with them. And I just really appreciate- And I just really appreciate the fact that we all, you know, participate with the schools and the kids. And even this morning, you know, Ms. Javonelli and I, we were at Edison, and watching those little kids perform, it makes you feel good. So it doesn't matter if you get up 8:00 in the morning or 7:00, I'll be there for coffee. Because it's important for us to, to be out there and for them to know that we do care. We care about the teachers, we care about the staff, we care about our students. And that is all I have to say. So, going down the line, Board Attorney, do you have any comments?
Just really briefly, as we mentioned last meeting, about the dismissal of the secondary case with regard to House Bill 7069. As we were sitting in this meeting today, the order of dismissal did, in fact, come through. So I just wanted to report back that that case was dismissed. The Supreme Court case is still same status, it's been fully briefed on jurisdictional grounds. The Supreme Court has not yet ruled as to whether they're going to actually accept jurisdiction.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Atkins?
Most of the things I was going to mention just naturally percolated up in our conversation today, so I don't have a lot of comments. Just wanted to mention StemTastic, which happened this Saturday, and that was, that was a really awesome event. I know some of you were there, and it just grows bigger every single year, so, you know, hats off to that team and the foundation, and the STEM crew, Lee, and all those that support him. Just very impressive, so. Those are my comments.
Okay, do we, is there any, does anyone have anything for good of the order? See you none? The meeting is adjourned, and it is 4:50. Thank you very much.